Good morning and welcome to the Landmarks Preservation Commission's public hearing and public meeting of today, August 12th, 2025. I'll begin this morning by asking our general counsel to call the roll.
Chair Carroll.
Here.
Vice Chair Master.
Here.
Chen.
Yeah.
Chu.
Here.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Here.
Mr. Goldblum. Commissioner Kwebe.
Here.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Here.
Commissioner Mann.
Here.
Commissioner Wilder.
Here.
All right. Good morning again, and welcome to our public hearing and public meeting of August 12th, 2025. This meeting is being held in our public hearing room in person on the second floor of 253 Broadway. It is also being held via Zoom and livestreamed on our YouTube channel for anyone who would like to watch the proceedings or participate remotely. And before we kick off our agenda today, I just wanted to say a few words, and that is that this is the last public hearing for the summer, and our next public hearing will be September 9th. But that means this is also my last public hearing as the chair of the LPC. And this is a really bittersweet moment for me. And I am, you know, it's a tough decision, but I know it's the right decision for me and for my family and the right time. And I want to thank you all for being such incredible commissioners and public servants. And we have done a lot of incredible work together through our designation work, especially recognizing places that reflect the diversity of the city, and through our regulatory work, which we do every week, in preserving important places and fostering innovative design that responds to historic contexts. And I want to thank you all for your service. It's been such a privilege to serve with you and to listen to you all and to learn from you. And I am forever grateful and just immensely proud of how you engage with your work here, and particularly as we review applications for work on designated properties, how you approach it with, you know, real intellect, problem-solving skills, empathy, which is so important to the success of this agency and our ability to continue to fulfill our mission and further our designation work. So, thank you all. I will miss you all very much. Some of you I've worked with for years. Some of you I've worked for less than years, and some of you are newer. And some I've worked for with years, but in various roles as an applicant and architect. And you're all going to do amazing work, and I'm going to miss being alongside you as you continue to shape the city and the field of preservation. So, thank you all for your incredible service, and good luck to you all. In the interim, the administration is committed to ensuring a seamless transition, and Vice Chair Master will be running the proceedings going forward until there is a new appointment. So, I thank you, Vice Chair Master, for your dedication and grace in accepting this appointment and continuing to run the hearings. Thank you. All right. Thank you all. Okay. Thank you. Bittersweet. So now, and we, this is a great agenda for my last hearing because we have a little bit of everything. We have, we're going to start with an agenda from the Research Department with five proposed designations by the Research Department for, that are here today for a vote. And then we will move to our Preservation Department agendas, where we'll start with our public meeting agenda, which will review applications that have already had a public hearing and for which we've already heard testimony, and we'll be reviewing revised designs today. And then we'll move to our Preservation Department Public Hearing Agenda to review new applications for work on designated properties. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Director of Research, Margaret Herman.
Morning Commissioners. I'm going to read all of the items into the record for going to a brief presentation. Item number one is LP 2687, The Barbie Building, 1517 West 38th Street in Manhattan, Block 840, Lot 31. The item proposed for designation is a 12-story Renaissance Revival-style loft building designed by Delano and Aldrich and built in 1908 to 1909. Item number two is LP 2688, Fashion Tower, 135 West 36th Street in Manhattan, Block 812, Lot 19. The item proposed for designation is a 20-story Renaissance Revival and Art Deco-style commercial structure designed by prominent American architect Emory Roth and built in 1924 to 26. Item number three is LP 2690, The Furcraft Building, 242 to 246 West 30th Street in Manhattan, Block 779, Lot 66. The item proposed for designation is a 14-story store-and-loft building designed by Henry I. Ozer and built in 1925. Item number four is LP 2689, The 29th Street Towers, 214 to 226 West 29th Street in Manhattan, Block 778, Lots 48 and 52. The item proposed for designation is a pair of connected 14- and 16-story-tall Gothic Revival-style commercial buildings designed by Henry I. Ozer in 1925. And item number five is LP 2691, The Left Court Clothing Center, 275 7th Avenue, Manhattan, louder? Okay. Thanks. In Manhattan, Block 801, Lot 1. The item proposed for designation is a 27-story Art Deco skyscraper designed by Buckman &amp; Kahn and built between 1927 and 1928. Okay. I will start with a brief explanation of LPC's Midtown South Initiative and an overview of the area's historical development before moving to the individual presentations by our staff. In 2023, LPC began surveying Midtown South alongside the Department of City Planning's project kickoff to rezone the area. LPC's Midtown South Initiative, shown in the dotted line on the map, is the area between 23rd Street and 42nd Street, between 5th and 9th Avenues, encompassing the four areas being rezoned. As part of this initiative, our research staff studied the area's history, previous survey work, and LPC designations, and analyzed the significance and condition of approximately 90 buildings in the survey area. We then developed a framework to illustrate the area's historic development patterns to identify thematic gaps that could be addressed through new designations. LPC's previous designations cover a range of historical eras in Midtown South, including the mid-19th-century residential period, the neighborhood's history as an entertainment district, and the tenderloin at the turn of the 20th century, and its role as a general business and transportation center after the construction of Penn Station. However, LPC's designations mostly do not include the key period from around 1910 to 1930, when Midtown South transformed into the Garment Center. And to address this gap in our designations, LPC's initiative identified five potential landmarks that capture this important Garment Center chapter in the neighborhood's history. By the late, mid-to-late 19th century, New York City had become the center of clothing manufacturing in the United States. The industry's manufacturing and retail presence in the city followed a pattern of northward migration from Lower Manhattan to the area near Union Square and north of Broadway towards 23rd Street and beyond. Factories moved into increasingly grand loft buildings, and department stores such as B. Altman were constructed after the turn of the 20th century. After complaints about the shift of some garment factories to around Midtown's 5th Avenue, a new zoning resolution was passed in 1916 that regulated the location of buildings designed for specific uses, as well as the bulk and height of new buildings. And with the support of industry leaders, a new Garment Center was conceived for the West 30s. The area of Midtown South had a rich history prior to its life as the city's Garment Center as a residential neighborhood, an entertainment and shopping area, and a center for business, especially after Penn Station's completion in 1910. As Midtown South became the Garment District in the 1920s, its streets were populated by store-and-loft buildings serving the industry. And one of these garment-related buildings is Cass Gilbert's 130 West 30th Street Building, an Assyrian Revival setback skyscraper built in 1927 and 1928, which appears to be LPC's only designation that specifically highlights the importance of the garment industry to New York City during this time. The buildings LPC has identified for potential designation today were built between 1908 and 1927, as Midtown South transformed into the Garment Center, a period in the city's history that has not been reflected in LPC's designations. LPC identified five potential landmarks that are impressive examples of early 20th-century commercial architecture, designed by some of the city's leading architects, and they help tell the full story of the Garment Center's historic development, the people who worked here, and the industry that has been one of the most important engines of New York's economy. And with that, we'll now move to staff presentations on the proposed landmarks. Thanks.
Good morning Commissioners. The Barbie Building at 1517 West 38th Street was built in 1908 and completed in 1909. It was designed by the prominent architectural firm of Delano and Art Aldrich. Its eye-catching design and materials framed three bays of window walls with Renaissance Revival terracotta. As one of the earliest tall loft buildings in Midtown, it also set the stage for the development of an entire neighborhood that would become the center for fashion and garment industries. On May 20th, 2025, the Landmarks Preservation Commission held a public hearing on the proposed designation of the Barbie Building as a New York City landmark and the related landmark site. The hearing was duly advertised in accordance with the provisions of law. Representatives of the Historic District's Council, the New York Landmarks Conservancy, and the Art Deco Society spoke in support of designation. No one spoke in opposition. The Barbie Building is located on West 38th Street near 5th Avenue. The proposed landmark site is the Tax Lot. It sits on the site of the 19th-century Barbie family home, shown with a star. Henry and Mary Laura Lloyd Barbie were wealthy New Yorkers who spent much of their time in Europe. After Henry died in 1906, Mary purchased the house next door, demolished both buildings to make way for the 12-story Barbie Building. After the turn of the 20th century, 5th Avenue became a major retail thoroughfare with upscale department stores such as B. Altman's and Lord &amp; Taylor. As a result, steel-framed loft buildings for garment showrooms and workshops began to appear nearby, rising above the residential four- and five-story townhouses. The Barbie Building was one of the earliest in what would become the bustling Garment Center amidst companies that would serve the department stores nearby on 5th Avenue. The prestigious firm of Delano and Aldrich practiced from 1903 to 1955, working for affluent clients with commissions for many building types, but they are best known for estates, clubs, and institutional buildings. LPC has included many of their New York buildings in its historic districts, and one of the most notable is the 1916 Colony Club on Park Avenue. Among their individual New York landmarks are the 1913 Knickerbocker Club Building and the 1924 Staten Island Savings Bank. The Real Estate Record and Guide reported the cladding would be dark red brick and terracotta, accenting the facade with stylish classical ornament. Dividing the three window bays are 12-story engaged columns of bundled rods. The regular grid of windows are held within a frame topped by an arched parapet. A distinctive decorative panel ringed with scrolls displays the construction date in raised Roman numerals. The building's sophisticated facade design, consisting primarily of a wall of windows within a regular grid, foreshadowed later commercial and industrial skyscrapers. As the loft building layout was flexible to accommodate not only workshops but other uses such as offices and studios. At its opening and over the years, the building housed many kinds of companies: a corset manufacturer, hatmakers, publishing firms, architectural offices, and artist studios. From 1985 to 2019, the building served as the corporate headquarters for Lord &amp; Taylor Department Store, located around the corner on 5th Avenue. After Lord &amp; Taylor closed its store and offices, the building's ground floor underwent storefront alterations, typical of large commercial buildings. The Barbie Building today remains an outstanding example of one of the earliest tall loft buildings constructed in what became the Midtown Garment Center. It is significant not only for its sophisticated architectural design by Delano and Aldrich, but also for its relationship to the fashion and garment industries. The Research Department recommends that the commission vote to designate the Barbie Building as an individual landmark. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Do we have any questions for Mary Ann? Questions? Okay. Any thoughts or comments on this one? I mean, this is a beautiful building, which really unfortunately doesn't photograph that well, and, but when you see it in person and you really understand the sort of verticality of it, the uniformity of its design, and then with this beautiful ornament on it, it really is very striking. And, and I think one of the things that I think is significant within this group that we are reviewing today is that it's really, it set the stage. It was one of the first and set the stage for the neighborhood's transformation into the Garment Center. Of course, also designed by prominent architects Delano and Aldrich, I think definitely worthy of recognition as an individual landmark. Does anyone else want to add anything? Yes, Commissioner Chen.
Echo the chair's comment. My office used to be diagonally across the street from this building. And, you know, and it's easy not to notice it until you look up and see the beauty. Raving on top, and, you know. Wonderful time.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, Commissioner Goldblum.
Yeah. One of the things about the Garment District, a place that I've spent most of my professional life in, is it's remarkable uniform. You know, there are variations, but it's remarkably uniform in its period, in the architectural style, in the volumes of the buildings, in the relationship between the avenues and the streets. And this, this stands out because it's, it breaks that mold, because it really is an individual building with individual character. It doesn't share the setback form of majority. It doesn't share the color, the kind of blonde, dusty blonde brick color of most of the buildings. And it's just a very simple, straightforward piece of architecture, and it's ennobled by the quality of the detailing and its pedigree. So, I think it's totally deserving.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to add anything? All right. Well, I think if everyone is comfortable, I would like to make a motion to designate this one. Commissioner Chen, would you make the motion?
I'll move it.
But actually, I'm going to give you a motion to read.
All right.
I move that the Landmarks Preservation Commission designate the Barbie Building, Borough, Manhattan, as a New York City individual landmark because of its special character and special historical and aesthetic interest and value as part of the development, heritage, and cultural characteristics of the city, state, and nation. And as said for in the designation report for LP-2687 dated August 12, 2025, I also move that Borough of Manhattan tax map Block 840, Lot 31 be designated as a landmark site, as described in the designation report as an illustrator in the attached map.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right. Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Vice Chair Master.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Kwebe.
Aye.
Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann.
Aye.
Mr. Wilder.
Aye.
With 10 in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
All right. I'm delighted. That is our newest individual landmark. Thank you Commissioners. And we'll now move to the next item. Matt.
Good morning. Fashion Tower is a 20-story commercial building in Manhattan's Garment Center designed by the prominent architect Emory Roth and built in 1924 to 1926. The building stands out in the neighborhood for its distinctive blend of medieval Renaissance and Art Deco styles and decoration at the base that expresses the building's connection to the garment industry. Fashion Tower would be the only commercial building by Emory Roth to be designated as a New York City individual landmark. On May 20th, 2025, the Landmarks Preservation Commission held a public hearing on the proposed designation of Fashion Tower as a New York City landmark and the proposed designation of the related landmark site. The hearing was duly advertised in accordance with the provisions of law. A representative of the building's owner spoke in opposition to designation, while representatives of the Historic District's Council and the New York Landmarks Conservancy testified in support. Fashion Tower is located at 135 West 36th Street, mid-block between Broadway and 7th Avenue. The proposed landmark site is the Tax Lot. Following passage of the 1916 zoning ordinance, the Garment Center began to form in the early 1920s. Designed by Emory Roth, the Fashion Tower's ribbed piers rise without interruption from a multi-story base capped by a continuous arcade to setbacks at the 17th, 18th, and 19th floors. Roth was one of New York's most prolific architects in the early 20th century. Born in Hungary, he emigrated to the United States in 1884 and worked in various fashionable architectural styles, from secessionist to art deco. Fashion Tower's developer, Mo Moore Row Realty, headed by cotton dealer Morris Rosenstein, acquired the site on West 36th Street in 1924 from the Church of the Holy Innocents, which stands directly behind the building on West 37th Street. Construction was mostly complete by the end of December 1925. The eye-catching, the eye-catching lower floors blend Renaissance Revival and Art Deco motifs that express the building's connection to the garment industry. For instance, colorful terracotta peacocks, feathery symbols of fashion and vanity crown the freight and lobby entrances. While the floors above feature the building's name flanked by winged angels that hold fabric shears and artists' brushes, terracotta reliefs of women clutching mirrors and spindles, as well as rosettes draped with ribbon. The use of such business-related symbolism is rare in the Garment Center. Fashion Tower was fully leased to members of the apparel industry. Though most of the tenants were involved in the production of women's clothing, the large storefront was leased to Witty Brothers, a manufacturer of men's suits. A 1926 advertisement celebrated the opening of the firm's second location, calling Fashion Tower magnificent. In the mid-1950s, however, the building's lobby entrance was significantly altered, and the storefront was coated with a stucco-like material, as you can see on the bright. These unfortunate changes were reversed as part of an award-winning facade restoration by GRT architects in 2015. Using the surviving terracotta relief above the freight entrance, which is on the right, as a model, the brilliantly colored peacock panels above the lobby entrance, which is on the left, were created, were recreated. Commissioners, we received testimony in opposition to the designation from the building's owners' representatives, who noted the restoration of decorative elements and questioned the significance of the building within Roth's career. Storefront bases are commonly altered on commercial buildings, and LPC has designated buildings with altered bases and some that have been restored. In this case, we applaud the owner for the restoration work they have done, but it is not the sole basis for the designation. Regarding the building's overall significance, we believe that the alterations to the building's base in the mid-20th century may have obscured this building from some scholars and guides to local architecture published prior to restoration. As described in our designation report, the building's blend of historic and modern styles across its facade, its creative approach to the restrictions of its mid-block site, and its carefully restored fashion-related imagery make it a notable example of Emory Roth's commercial architecture in New York City. Designed by architect Emory Roth with a distinctive decorative scheme evoking its historic use, Fashion Tower is one of the most impressive buildings in the Garment Center. The Research Department recommends that the commission vote to designate Fashion Tower an individual landmark.
Thank you very much, Matt. All right. Commissioners, do we have questions on this one at all for Matt? Okay. Well, I certainly would recommend that we vote to designate this one. This is a really, this is actually a standout in the group. I think that, like Barbie, it has a very tall, singular form that draws your eye up with a facade, in this case, very ornamented with ornamentation and decorative elements that reflect the building's use and place in the garment industry. And, and I, you know, I know that the owners are concerned about what designation would mean for future changes and possible conversion of the building. And I just want to say that those of you around this table know that we approve adaptive reuse all the time, and that the Landmarks Law really is flexible enough and nimble enough to allow us to make changes to accommodate new uses. So, it is something that this commission is very experienced with, and we, you know, embrace the idea of adaptive reuse and have approved many, many conversions, and allowing the flexibility to accommodate those new uses. So, I hope that the owners will experience that same flexibility when they do come to us for changes. I know that we will work closely with them to help them meet their needs while protecting this architecturally and historically significant building. And, I mean, the ornament is really beautiful, and I do want to commend the owners for their stewardship of this building and the restoration work that has, you know, really made this building stand out in the streetscape. So, I look forward to continuing to work with these property owners, well, the commission continuing to work with these property owners. Would anyone else like to add anything? Yes, Vice Chair Master.
Yeah, I wanted to speak about, I think, all of, all five of these buildings, and to say that not only are they architecturally significant, but I think that they're historically significant. They represent two industries, the garment industry and the fur trade manufacturing, which were huge contributors to New York City's economic growth. And they capture these industries really at their height, from maybe the 1920s through World War II. And the fashion industry, the garment industry really dominated the US market, and then the fur business was really premier in the world. And I just want to quote from the designation report that really indicates how significant it was. By the end of the 1930s, New York City garment workers produced three out of four ready-made coats-dresses and four out of five of the fur garments worn by American women. So, I just want to say, and this applies to all five of these buildings, that these buildings are historically significant and worthy of designation.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to add anything? Commissioner Jefferson.
It's important to understand context, because building in its context is beautiful and works well within its historical context and its architectural context.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum.
Yeah. And I think, just like the Barbie Building was a standout by its being different from the neighborhood, this one, I think, merits inclusion because it's kind of the exemplar of the type of the mid-block Garment District building. It shares the color. It shares the setback, the zoning profile, but it does so in a much more refined way, in a much more developed way than most of the other buildings in the neighborhood do. So, I do think it, you know, and the fact that the base was, was redone, it's not uncommon for buildings to have modifications at the storefront, both before designation and after. And we're very flexible when it comes to storefront modification. So, the fact that they did the right thing shows that they love their building, and, and the fact that we will love it too means that we should get along fine.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Chu.
I think in terms of the facade design itself and the level of detail and craft and the level of detail and craft, it's really, I really appreciate. But the thing that strikes me is also the sensitivity to scale at the street level. There's a grand opening, which is much more civic and public-oriented, but there are these beautiful human-scaled entries on either side that I think are just wonderful to have both of those on the facade. It makes it special.
Commissioner Mann.
Yeah, just to echo perhaps some of the things and underscore things that have been said, I think, you know, if the owner were in the future interested in adaptive reuse of this building, it could be a great candidate. And, you know, I don't anticipate that it would be impeded by landmarking. I know that there were some concerns about the originality of the fabric at the storefront, but that is far, far from the only ornamentation on the building that's unique in that the ornamentation is not, you know, only at the storefront, but rather across the whole building. And in fact, at the human level, we have this fantastic freight entrance that in fact is original. I have to rethink everything I have always thought as an architect about freight entrances.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, well, I think, Commissioner Ginsburg, did you want to say something?
No.
Okay, sorry, I thought I missed you. Okay, well, I would love to make a motion on this one. Commissioner, Vice Chair Master, would you make the motion on this one?
I move that the Landmarks Preservation Commission designate Fashion Tower, Borough of Manhattan, as a New York City individual landmark because of its special character and special historical and aesthetic interest and value as part of the development, heritage, and cultural characteristics of the city, state, and nation, as set forth in the designation report for LP dash two six eight eight dated August twelfth, two thousand and twenty five. I also move that the Borough of Manhattan tax map block eight one two lot nineteen be designated as its landmark site as described in the designation report and illustrated in the attached map.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mark. Will you call the vote?
Chair Carol.
Aye.
Vice Chair Master.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum. Commissioner Iquembe.
Aye.
Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilder.
Aye.
Ten in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, that's our newest individual landmark now. Thank you so much, Matt, and thank you, commissioners. We'll now move to the next item.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Jessica Fletcher of the Research Department, presenting the Fur Craft Building. This building is a monument, this building is a monument to the section of Manhattan known as the Fur District and to New York's leading role in the international fur business in the twentieth century. At the public hearing on May twentieth, two thousand and twenty five, four people spoke in favor of the designation, including representatives of the New York Landmarks Conservancy, Historic Districts Council, Art Deco Society of New York, and Save Chelsea. There were no speakers in opposition to designation. The Fur Craft Building is located on the south side of West Thirtieth Street, between Seventh and Eighth Avenues. The proposed landmark site is the tax lot. When the building opened in nineteen twenty five, this section of West Thirtieth Street, between Sixth and Eighth Avenues, was known as Furrier's Street for its high concentration of businesses related to the manufacture, wholesaling, and storage of fur garments, and its significance to the international fur business. Furs were central to New York's commerce from its earliest days, forming the foundation of its colonial economy as the primary trade goods between the Dutch West India Company and the New Netherlands indigenous people. Beaver skins were the most valuable pelts traded. Beavers were featured on the seventeenth-century seals of New Netherlands and its primary city, New Amsterdam, before being incorporated into the seal of the city of New York. As the official account of the city's seal and flag stated in nineteen fifteen, "So far as we know, this use of the beaver is unique in heraldry," end quote. By the early eighteen hundreds, New York had a large wholesale fur market, dominated by John Jacob Astor. In the late nineteenth century, the fur business was centered on Broadway and Bleecker Street. As with other garment manufacturers, makers of fur garments followed fashionable retailers northward as they relocated from Ladies Mile to Fifth Avenue in the early nineteen hundreds. Around World War One, a new fur center began developing south of Penn Station between Sixth and Eighth Avenues. This happened, this happened as New York was becoming the world's largest fur center, as expressed in this nineteen sixteen advertisement. By the early nineteen twenties, fur manufacturing was one of the city's largest industries, processing more than twenty-nine million animal skins each year. This drew praise from industry advocates, as well as criticism from animal advocates, including those troubled by its trapping practices and those worried about its potential destruction of fur-bearing animal populations. By nineteen twenty-two, New York's fur industry comprised three thousand companies employing tens of thousands of people engaged in all aspects of the trade. More than eighty-five percent of the country's fur garments were manufactured in New York. Although fur businesses initially occupied repurposed tenements in the area south of Penn Station, new loft buildings were rapidly replacing these structures of an earlier day by the early nineteen twenties, as shown in the image on the left. The industry had a rich labor history. In nineteen twenty-six, labor actions took place throughout the Fur District as workers undertook a seventeen-week strike that won them a forty-hour work week. Another strike in nineteen thirty-eight brought a five-day work week and equal treatment and pay for African-American workers. By the nineteen fifties, fur workers would be among the highest-paid industrial workers in the country. John F. Kennedy addressed fur workers in the district during his nineteen sixty campaign, later stating that their activism had, quote, "a profound effect on our national life, helping to better it for all Americans," end quote. During the Fur District's initial boom period, in nineteen twenty-five, a new organization, the Fur Craft Realty Company, announced their planned construction of a fourteen-story building dedicated to the trade. As it neared completion on West Thirtieth Street, the publication Fur Trade Review classed it with the district's most modern buildings, providing, quote, "the last word in beauty, comfort, and design," end quote. The magazine described its developers as, quote, "practical furriers who know the furrier's needs, and this building is to be, in their minds, a monument to the progress of the fur trade," end quote. The Fur Craft Building, quote, "will offer every modern facility for the furrier, and the fact that it is ideally located on Furrier's Street is an added asset for tenants who want to be in the very heart of trade activity," end quote. The design of the Fur Craft Building reflected its owner's desire to make their building a monument. Most of its ornament is at the ground story, where a classical bronze enframent, clock, and grand terracotta entrance surround. With two alert foxes overlook the main entrance and a section of Thirtieth Street then known as Furrier's Street. These foxes are perhaps the most striking and compelling reminders of the business in the old Fur District. The original terracotta storefronts crowned by cartouches and bracketed cornices with vitruvian scrolls also remain intact. The building's designer, Henry I. Ozer, was an immigrant from Kiev who studied civil engineering at Columbia University. He designed several other loft buildings in the garment and fur districts, including Twenty-Ninth Street Towers, which is also being presented today. In the Fur Craft Building, Ozer skillfully blended the setbacks requirement of the zoning code with the neoclassical style. Above the seventh story, the facade recedes in a series of chamfered setbacks and a prominent Greek temple projects forward. Above the fourteenth story is a two-story tower framed by plinths. The tower's loss of decorative detail, as well as its hip roof, represent the only substantive changes to this very well-preserved building. For several decades after the Fur Craft Building opened, New York would retain its worldwide leadership in the industry and fur garments would be among society's most desirable and prestigious luxury items, whether they were worn at the automat, on a fashion runway, or on the stage of Radio City Music Hall. As the fur business thrived, so did the city's fur district. But by the nineteen eighties, New York's fur industry had shrunk as a result of warmer winters, changing fashions, the shift to overseas manufacturing, and highly successful anti-fur campaigns. Although most Fur District buildings were subsequently adapted for other tenants, several furriers remain on Thirtieth Street today. Today, the Fur Craft Building houses a variety of commercial tenants while continuing to recall an industry with a rich and complex history in which New York once led the world. The Research Department recommends that the commission vote to designate the Fur Craft Building as an individual landmark. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, do we have any questions on this particular one? Yes, Vice Chair Master.
Do we have any other individual landmark buildings that represent like the fur trade industry?
I believe the one thirty West Thirtieth Street, that's the Cass Gilbert Building. I believe that was a fur industry building. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, let's, let's move to comments. I mean, this is also, again, both architecturally and historically significant, as we've heard. And I think, you know, that the architecture and its massing is really an expression of the creativity using the nineteen sixteen zoning, opposed by the nineteen sixteen zoning. And, and the ornament speaks directly to the, its use and its purpose and, and the fur industry. And so there's no question in my mind that architecturally, this is also very significant within this neighborhood. And I think historically, so interesting, it really does speak to both the transformation of the neighborhood into the garment industry, as well as the fur industry, which was really centered on these blocks right here. And, and the complexity of that industry and how it's been, how it has been integrated into our fabric and our society over the last hundred years. And so I think that that is very interesting. And also the labor history that's so significant here and, and had such an important impact on labor and labor movements going forward. So there's a lot of history packed into this architecturally significant building, and I'm really delighted it's here today. Would anyone else like to say anything? Yes, Commissioner Ginsburg.
I'd just like to observe that this is a very elegant resolution of the zoning setbacks. And it really is unusual in that sense. And I think adds to the building's importance.
Anyone else? Commissioner Chen.
Having served on the zoning appeal dealing with the setback, I think this, the top of this building, the way it treated the setback elegantly, speaks for the volumes.
Great. Yes, Commissioner Chu.
I think in, you know, speaking to all of the five proposed designations here, these buildings all represent a period of, and typology of building that is slightly larger in scale. The floor-tofloors tend to be taller. There's lots of windows for natural light and ventilation, and they're generally all open-plan buildings. So I'm also hoping that that allows for desirable buildings to also occupy. You don't get floor-tofloors like these in modern construction anymore. So there's something to be treasured just about the scale of the period and the scale of the spaces and floors. And flexibility of the floor plans are beneficial for adaptive reuse as well.
Commissioner Goldblum.
I, in addition to that, I think that, for me, what's interesting about this particular building is that the previous two had very well-established pedigrees from trained architects who were renowned in their field. This is, is much more of a representation of a less-known architect, a perhaps informally educated architect, who put together a design that's very distinctive and unusual. And it's, the thing that makes it distinctive for me within the district is the almost pomposity of the top. You know, the, the notion that, you know, this building deserves a Greek temple on its roof is, it's, it stands out. It's pretty unusual. And it takes the zoning requirements for setbacks in a very different way than most of the other buildings in the district. Instead of kind of splaying it out in a much more art deco, kind of fragmented, verticalized way, it centers it and it kind of drives that center down, which is also rather unusual for these buildings. A lot of them were kind of, had entrances on the left and right and storefront on the center. This one, you know, has a very strong center that's emphasized by its top. So even though it's exemplary of the district in that it's more informally made, it was very much a workaday building, it kind of takes it to a different level by this airs.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Jefferson.
I think it's a confused building.
All right, Vice Chair.
Should be designated.
Vice Chair Master.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate again the historical significance. I mean, the fur trade has been so important, I mean, to our country ever since, you know, colonial development. And really, in this time period, the fur trade, we were really the, the world's largest fur trader. And so given that, you know, we have only one individual landmark previously designated for this very important part of our history, this is definitely worthy of designation.
Thank you. All right, so I would love if we could make a motion on this one. Commissioner Chu, would you make the motion? Do you have it there? Margaret, yeah, Margaret has a copy.
I move that the Landmarks Preservation Commission designate the Fur Craft Building, Borough of Manhattan, as a New York City individual landmark because of its special character and special historic and aesthetic interest and value as a part of the development, heritage, and cultural characteristics of the city, state, and nation, as set forth in the designation report for LP twenty-six ninety dated August twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five. I also move that the Borough of Manhattan tax map block seven seven nine lot sixty-six be designated as its landmark site as prescribed in the designation report and illustrated in the attached map.
Thank you. Commissioner Iquembe, would you second that motion?
Second.
Thanks. Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carol.
Aye.
Vice Chair Master.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum. Commissioner Iquembe.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilder.
Aye.
Ten in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, that is our next individual landmark, and we'll now move to the next item.
Good morning. I'm Sarah Echols, presenting the Twenty-Ninth Street Towers. The Twenty-Ninth Street Towers are a significant reminder of New York City's fur trade history, which at its height was producing more than eighty-five percent of the United States for merchandise. The towers are so-called because they were owned and funded by two different developers, but constructed together and connected through the back and base. The building's distinct setbacks, glazed terracotta, and ornamentation makes this purpose-built fur building a striking architectural gem in the Garment Center. At the public hearing on May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five, four people spoke in favor of designation, including representatives of the New York Landmarks Conservancy, Historic Districts Council, Art Deco Society of New York, and Save Chelsea. No one spoke in opposition. The two connected buildings of two one four and two two six West Twenty-Ninth Street are located on the south side of the block between Seventh and Eighth Avenues. The proposed landmark site consists of both tax lots. Before their construction, the neighborhood was home to mainly a mix of black residents and immigrants. The eight buildings that were raised to construct the towers included four lofts, three dwellings, and one church. The church, a Macedonia Baptist church located at two 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 West Twenty-Ninth Street, had a primarily black congregation and was active up until the sale of the building to developers. The Twenty-Ninth Street Towers are a striking feature of the Garment Center. In addition to the Fur Craft Building, also designed by architect Henry I. Ozer, the towers are one of few remaining highly-designed and intact purpose-built fur buildings, featuring ornate symbols tied to the fur trade housed within them. The towers, built for the fur trade and constructed after the nineteen sixteen zoning resolution, featured mandated setbacks and cross-ventilation, providing more light and air for the manufacturing housed within them. In addition to being functional for manufacturing, the towers needed to be attractive for potential buyers who visited the offices also located here. Ozer struck this balance well by creating an unusual arrangement of setbacks, alternating both the bays and widths of the setbacks, resulting in visual interest that is uniform across the two towers. Along the facade, as it rose in setback, he employed striking terracotta elements. The terracotta was interlaid with pink and tan Roman brick, creating a seamless transition between the facade and decorative elements. The verticality of each of the taller towers is highlighted by wide piers and narrow mullions, topped at various roof lines by Gothic revival decoration executed in the same terracotta used along the facade. The structures are tied together by the same variegated terracotta cladding across the entire fur story. the entire fur story. It frames the arch entrance at 214 West 29th Street and the historic iron storefronts. The grotesques alternate on either side of the entrance, featuring a man feeding a beaver and then inspecting its pelt. The beaver, instrumental to the growth of both the fur trade and the larger development in New York, is a crucial piece of New York's history. Its use in the grotesque is both symbolic of the work done in this building and the larger movement of the fur industry to this neighborhood. This building was one of many being constructed for the new "fur district," a designated space for the fur years. The towers were a desirable building to be in due to their location and construction. The tenants were largely fur manufacturers that sold direct to consumers as well as wholesale. The tenants in this building also showed the transition from mink, notably expensive, to skunks, raccoons, and even larger mammals. Fur stayed in fashion for decades, providing tenants for this building through the 60s into the 80s and 90s, where the fashion notably began to change. As the millennium approached, the building became home to other garment workers and jewelry makers from the nearby diamond district. The 29th Street Towers has retained much of its original details. Windows have been changed, but the decoration of the wrought iron framing on the first floor has remained, as has the terracotta decoration throughout the entire building. The 29th Street Towers is a significant reminder of New York City's fur trade history. Its unique glazed terracotta, alternating setbacks, and decorative elements makes the building a striking architectural gem that has remained in the Garment Center. The Research Department recommends that the commission vote to designate the 29th Street Towers an individual landmark.
Thank you, Sarah. Do we have any questions on this one? All right, this is also another, you know, building that speaks to not only the garment industry, but the fur industry, and is also like the building, the Furcraft Building, is, you know, interesting in its use of setbacks to meet the required setbacks for the zoning, 1916 zoning. It also features ornament that speaks to its use. And I think it's also interesting that it was built really as two separate towers and designed to match and harmonize with each other. So I think it's definitely another interesting and architecturally and historically significant building here. Anyone else? Commissioner Chu.
Yeah, I think that this building in particular has a wonderful massing. I think how they decided to use the setback zoning requirements, but also take it to another level, I really appreciate the uniformity of the base to respect the height of the streetscape, but then this playfulness above that, which I think will, you know, remain a reminder of the periods of the city and where the zoning was back, you know, decades and decades ago, 100 years ago, and how the city has changed. I think that that's an important reminder within our building height and massing, the changes that we go through.
Anyone else want to add anything? All right, well, I do think that we should move ahead with this one. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you make the motion?
Yep. I move that the Landmarks Preservation Commission designate the 29th Street Tower, Borough of Manhattan, as New York City individual landmark because of its special character and special historic and aesthetic interest and value as part of the development, heritage, and cultural characteristics of the city, state, and nation as set forth in the designation report for LP-2689 dated August 12, 2025. I also move that the Borough of Manhattan tax map block 778, lots 48 and lot 52, be designated as its landmark site as described in the designation report and illustrated in the attached map.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Vice Chair Master.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum. Commissioner Equembe.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Mayan.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilder.
Aye.
Ten in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
Thank you. Well, we'll move to the next and final item.
Good morning again, I'm Jessica Fletcher from the Research Department, presenting this time on the Lefkort Clothing Center. The Lefkort Clothing Center is a 26-story Art Deco loft building in the Garment District that was designed by Eli Jacques Kahn of the firm of Bookman &amp; Kahn for the developer Abraham E. Lefkort. When it opened in January 1929, the center contained showrooms, manufacturing space, and offices leased to various clothing firms. Notably, this site also became an important place for union activity when the International Ladies Garment Workers Union began leasing a floor in the building for their health center in 1935, and then purchased the whole building in 1945. At the public hearing on May 20, 2025, four people spoke in support of designation, including one person representing two organizations. Speakers included representatives of the Community Board Four, New York Landmarks Conservancy, the Historic District Council, the Art Deco Society, and Save Chelsea. The Lefkort Clothing Center is located at 275 7th Avenue on the east side of the block between West 25th and West 26th Streets. The proposed landmark site is the tax lot. The buildings that would be raised to make way for the Lefkort Clothing Center, shown on this slide, were typical of the broader landscape of the tenderloin at the turn of the 20th century. The photograph on the left shows the tenement at the corner of 7th Avenue and 26th Street, and the photo on the right shows that same tenement, as well as the row houses converted into multifamily housing with ground-floor stores, restaurants, and saloons that face 7th Avenue. Irish, German, and native-born whites and Black New Yorkers lived in these buildings in the late 19th and early 20th centuries. Abraham E. Lefkort was a leading developer of the Garment Center, who played a significant part in relocating the industry from Lower Manhattan to Midtown West. Lefkort was born in 1877, likely in Birmingham, England, to a Russian Jewish family who emigrated to the United States when he was five years old. Advancing through the clothing industry from a position as a clerk to a traveling salesman and eventual owner of a women's garment manufacturing firm, in 1910, he developed his first building, and in 1923, he devoted himself entirely to real estate. At the time of his death in 1932, The New York Times reported of the Lefkort Buildings that, quote, "If placed from end to end, they would cover a distance over a mile in length and would form a building towering eight times the height of the Woolworth Building," end quote, and illustrated Lefkort's prolific activities with the composite image seen on the right-hand side of the slide. Lefkort hired the firm of Bookman &amp; Kahn to design the Lefkort Clothing Center, with Eli Jacques Kahn leading the project. Kahn had been designing lofts and showrooms in the Garment District since 1919. Historian Andrew Dolcott has written that, quote, "Kahn's career as a garment loft designer culminated in the late 1920s with a group of enormous skyscrapers," end quote, of which the Lefkort Center is a significant example, as one of the largest purpose-built garment buildings in the district. Four of Kahn's buildings have been designated as individual landmarks, including some of the most prominent buildings of the late 1920s, such as the Tupac Avenue Building with its exuberant Art Deco polychrome terracotta details, and the Holland Plaza Building, designed in the modern classical style with expressionist brickwork throughout. Inspired by his visit to the 1925 International Exhibition of Modern Decorative and Industrial Arts in Paris, Kahn was an enthusiastic proponent of what would become known as the Art Deco style. In keeping with this style, he used rectilinear and curvilinear motifs, patented brickwork, and decorative cast-iron window enframents in the Lefkort Clothing Center to create eye-catching geometric ornament across the facade. In the months leading up to the Lefkort Clothing Center's opening in January 1929, newspapers reported on the swift pace of leasing for the new building, noting that every available space was rented out in advance. Early tenants of the building included many men's and boys' garment manufacturers, such as Coen &amp; Lang and the firm Rosenthal-Etlinger. During the 1940s and 50s, there continued to be many clothing firms in the building, including Lewis Apparel Stores, the Phyllis Dress Company, and the Tops Overcoat Company. One of the most important tenants of the Lefkort Clothing Center was the International Ladies Garment Workers Union. Established in 1900, the ILGWU organized to improve working conditions in sweatshops throughout the United States and Canada. Founded by Jewish immigrants, the union worked tirelessly to increase wages, limit work hours, and ensure safe working conditions. This was particularly important after the industrial disaster of the Triangle Shirtwaist Fire in 1911, in which 146 workers died. In the aftermath, the ILGWU negotiated with factory owners to protect workers. In addition to advocating for better conditions in the workplace, the union also built a robust cultural program and developed other benefits for its members, from education classes to a vacation camp. One of the most important benefits the union provided was its health center. Originally located in two rooms at Union Square, the center greatly expanded over the years, and in 1935, moved into the 25th floor of the Lefkort Clothing Center. When the center opened at 275 7th Avenue, it employed 40 doctors, five nurses, and 25 staff members. Services on offer ranged from physical exams and prescriptions to minor surgeries. The center cost just $0.35 a month, about $8 in today's money, in addition to union dues. The health center received press coverage throughout its early years, including notably a spread in 1938 Life magazine, which reported on the life of a union member named Yeta Henna. The magazine showed Henna getting a health checkup in the union's skyscraper health center and documented the crucial role that the center played in the life of union members. In 1945, the ILGWU bought the entire building at 275 7th Avenue, occupying five floors and leasing out the rest to tenants. Today, the Lefkort Clothing Center is still owned by the union, which is now known as Unite Here and represents workers in the garment and hospitality industries. The Lefkort Clothing Center has undergone minor alterations to the commercial storefronts, the addition of an aluminum cornice at the first floor, and two minimally visible rooftop additions. Some windows have also been replaced with louvers. These changes are typical of large buildings in the Garment District and do not detract from the striking brickwork and massing of this important skyscraper designed by one of New York's foremost Art Deco architects. The Research Department recommends that the Landmarks Preservation Commission votes to designate the Lefkort Clothing Center as an individual landmark.
Thank you. All right, any questions on this one, commissioners? All right, I mean, this is, if you've noticed, these five sites that we've looked at today, they really are, they've been presented chronologically, but they also represent sort of the arc of the period of development for the garment industry, starting with the Barbie Building, which was pre-1916, and really set the stage for the transformation of the neighborhood, all the way to the Lefkort Center, built in 1927. And here we are at this moment, at this period, end of the period, with this building that is just massive, a full block long, with setbacks, and architecturally significant, designed by, again, very prominent architects. And I will note that as we sit in this hearing room and look at these glass block windows, this is a later alteration to 253 by Eli Jacques Kahn, so we can appreciate our own space in that context. But also, this building really also reflects very well the garment industry and labor history changes that took place here and in this neighborhood, purpose-built for the garment industry with, by the International Ladies Garment Workers Union, still owned by Unite Here, representing garment workers as well as hospitality workers. So there's an incredible amount of history within this building, not to mention Lefkort himself and sort of all he was able to achieve, sort of the American story. So I think this building really exemplifies kind of the full transformation of this neighborhood during this period. Would anyone else like to add anything? And I would note that the owners that we've been working with have been extremely collaborative and cooperative, and I think are really excited about this as well, which makes it even more special. Commissioner Mayan.
That's wonderful to hear. I'm really glad to hear that about the owners. It's an absolutely stunning building, perhaps quieter than the previous group, but dignified and well-proportioned, you know, really an exemplar of its type and its time, you know, with, as you noted, prominent architects, prominent owner, developer, prominent tenants, you know, it hits every single mark.
Thanks, Commissioner Goldblum.
I agree with what Frank said, but I would add that, as an aggregate, these buildings together make like a kind of a mini disparate district, in that they're really a curated collection of moments, representative moments, in a neighborhood that's undergoing lots of change. And I think that the preservation of these buildings as individual landmarks, but in a kind of aggregation that we're recognizing through this process and that the designation reports also recognize, it's kind of an interesting look at what we do. We are working with, you know, this was a process of working with city planning and other agencies to look at this neighborhood that is about to undergo significant change and say, how do we make this neighborhood both progress, but do so in a way that holds on to this history? The history of the unions, the history of the specific architects, the history of the zoning code, the history, you know, all the histories that we've been talking about fur, which we hope is consigned to history for the most part. You know, the idea that these buildings will kind of remain protected and relatively intact over the years as their environs change, I think is kind of what we do. And it means that this new development phase for this very important, somewhat tattered district will hold on to its history and will integrate that history into its next chapter.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Chen.
Yeah, just to follow up on Michael's comment, I just want to commend the research staff. Michael used the right word. You really curated a nice collection of the best representation of this district, and kudos to all the hard work behind it. And I know we get to vote on it, but the hard work's already done by you guys.
Commissioner Chu.
Sorry, this is a bit of a detail question, but that shiny new element there, what's that? Is it an aluminum detail that was added after?
At the base.
At the horizontal, right there, yeah.
That is.
Do we know what that is?
Are you talking about the cornice?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's non-historic.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And is that like an aluminum piece?
I think it's aluminum, yeah.
Okay, all right. Just so we know, because when they come back again, what is existing condition?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out. Okay, so it would be great if we could move ahead with this one. Commissioner Mayan, would you read the motion for this one? I do, here we go.
Thank you, I'd be honored to. I move that the Landmarks Preservation Commission designate the Lefkort Clothing Center, Borough of Manhattan, as a New York City individual landmark because of its special character and special historical and aesthetic interest and value as part of the development, heritage, and cultural characteristics of the city, state, and nation as set forth in the designation report for LP 2691 dated August 12, 2025. I also move that Borough of Manhattan tax map block 801, lot 1, be designated as its landmark site as described in the designation report and illustrated in the attached map.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilder, would you second that motion?
So second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Vice Chair Master.
Aye.
Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum. Equembe.
Aye.
Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Mayan.
Aye.
Wilder.
Aye.
Ten in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, so that is now a New York City individual landmark. And I want to thank you all for reviewing these and voting on them today. I'm so pleased that we voted to designate these five buildings. They are impressive examples of early 20th-century commercial architecture designed by some of the city's leading architects, and they tell the full story of the Garment District's historic development, the people who worked here, and the industry that has been one of the most important engines of New York's economy. And following up on what Commissioner Goldblum and Commissioner Chen said, these designations are the result of a comprehensive survey by the Research Department. are the result of a comprehensive survey by the research department, who developed a framework to identify garment districts' historic development patterns, to identify potential individual landmarks. And the result of this survey is the designation of these five buildings today, which all stand out architecturally and historically, each representing an important moment in the garment district's evolution from what had been a primarily residential neighborhood to a global center for the garment and fur industries and a center for the nation's growing labor movement. So I'm very excited about these designations. I also want to note that these designations are a successful example of planning and preservation working together. LPC's designations were done in coordination with the Department of City Planning's Midtown South Mixed Use Plan, which is an ambitious proposal to bring approximately 9,700 new homes across 42 blocks of Midtown South. And LPC identified preservation opportunities in the neighborhood and worked closely with the Department of City Planning, elected officials, key stakeholders, and the community to inform that planning process. So I think this is a wonderful example of how we can, we work together through interagency efforts, but how preservation and planning really go hand in hand. And I'm delighted that we have represented this period in history with these designations today. So thank you all, and thank you to Margaret and the research team, all of you who did such incredible research, first survey work and then research and brought these designations to us. Thanks very much. Okay. And we'll now move to the preservation department's public meeting agenda, and I will turn it over to Caroline Kane Levy, Deputy Director in Preservation.
Good morning, commissioners. We'll start today with the public meeting agenda number one, and it's docket number LPC 2509964, an application for a binding report in the Borough of the Bronx, Blocks 5650, Lot 1, the Orchard Beach Pavilion, Orchard Beach Bathhouse Individual Landmark. This is a modern classical-style waterfront recreation complex with Bozart elements, designed by Amor Embry II and landscape architects Gilmore D. Clark and Michael Rapuano, and built in 1932, 34 through 37. And the application is to modify window details. The applicants are here to present the details once we open the proceedings.
Thank you. And we'll do that right now. Vice Chair Master, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
I'll move.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, you may go begin.
Hello, my name is Martha Bush. I'm an architect at Marvel, and I'm here today to present one question related to the Orchard Beach Pavilion restoration regarding, regarding replacement windows. I'll start with just a brief overview to provide context. This is a project for the Parks Department. We are undertaking it with EDC and our preservationists at Building Conservation Associates. The site is an expansive pavilion on Orchard Beach in the Bronx within Pelham Bay Park. We last presented the project to the commissioners in a public hearing in May 2021, when we were given approval to move forward with the alterations. So this view is from that time, when there was no public access inside the pavilion because of the deteriorated condition of the structure. Our scope of restoration is defined by the dotted lines. It includes the primary public and concession areas of the pavilion. Note here that while the pavilion is symmetrical, within the scope area, you can see there is a wing on the north that is included within the scope, but not that equivalent wing on the south. I'll touch a bit more on that in a moment. Regarding the building history, the pavilion was built in the 1930s. It's both a city landmark and spaces. And regarding the objectives for the project, the restoration of the pavilion is by far the largest scope of work. We also have some alterations, including to provide equitable access to the pavilion and update the facility to increase the viability and longevity. We've now been in construction for two and a half years. We've been looking closely with our staff level here at landmarks at every step, and you can see some progress. We have new sound concrete columns and roof slabs for the logas, and our accessible ramps are taking shape. The limestone has come down and gone back up. And we're installing new terracotta wainscots. So just showing here that this is a large-scale project, but today we are just focusing on the north wing, highlighted on the right here. Historically, this wing was used for support spaces for concessions, and that is the proposed use as well going forward. The facade of the north wing is on the land side of the pavilion. This is where visitors walk through to reach the beach and the concessions, which are both on the other side of the, of the pavilion. On the paved area that extends in front of this north wing facade is a service entry for concessionaires. We have some photos to show this context. The first photo is going to show the overall elevation, and then we will closer. The outline of the north wing is dashed in to the left. There are trees and other vegetation in front of it. You can see here the relationship of the north wing to the south wing on the opposite side. It's quite a distance between them. So we are presenting the north wing windows today because this facade faces into the park, so, you know, by landmark's definition, it is a primary facade. But as you can see in this photo, it is, does function and read as a subordinate facade. These are closer-in views. On the left, it's from the service entry. And two views from the public path as you're approaching the pavilion. And these are very recent views with existing and new planting. They're summertime views, and I should point out, this pavilion is a seasonal venue. Many people visit in the, in the beach, to go to the beach in the summer. In contrast, very few people will visit in the off-season, so seeing it with foliage is what the majority of people will, will see. The original design drawing of this facade shows there's two types of windows, the upper level and the lower level. Both are casements, which open outward. And this are, show the conditions of these historic windows when we first started the project. The casements are not in operable condition. The lower level, they have metal mesh on them, added over for security. In the upper level, windows did not close. Unfortunately, this promoted further deterioration of the building. For further context, we're going to touch on the south wing, which is not in the restoration scope. All of the upper windows have already been replaced with double-hung windows previously. This is the current view of the windows in the south wing, showing these replacement windows at the upper level. Noted, this, this wing is not in juxtaposition, it is quite a distance from them. And then back to the north wing. We proposed all new windows for this facade, and the proposed windows have the same configuration of lights, including true divided lights. But because of security and maintenance, maintenance issues, we've proposed that the casement portions of the windows be fixed. At the upper levels, the lower light of these windows is operable. These have been approved as awning windows instead of hoppers. When they're left open, there's a bit more weather protection. The windows at the lower level are proposed to be fixed. Showing the window details, with the historic on the left, the historic windows were steel extrusions set in a wooden frame. The proposed windows have been approved as aluminum. The jam and rail details, generally, the profiles for the fixed aluminum windows are not much wider than the original steel profiles, while the operable aluminum. Repeating the elevations here, the restoration project is in construction now, and the contractor has included the fixed windows in their bid. So changes at this point unfortunately would be an extra cost to the project. Costs have been a major challenge for the project. It is a large project with significant unforeseen conditions. Given that this is a subordinate facade with little visibility from the public way, we are asking today, project may proceed with windows as detailed here with fixed lights.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Ginsburg?
Why is the south wing not included in the project?
It was part of the original scope line for the project, and that portion of the building was used by Parks for maintenance and operations, and they now have a separate facility for that use. So we did need to control costs from the start. That was a decision from, from Parks and EDC to not include, you know.
I, I would encourage in the future that the south wing windows be replaced to match the historic and the north wing, but I understand cost, et cetera.
Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Chu.
Is restoration and cleaning of the limestone a part of the project?
Yes, definitely. All the limestone is coming off, being restored, and then being installed.
New sills and as needed, et cetera?
As needed.
Okay.
As much historic as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? All right, we'll move to public testimony, and then we'll come back to you. And I'll note that there is no one in the hearing room to speak on this item, so I will turn it over to, sorry, it's, there's no testimony, it's not a hearing. Excuse me. Thank you for that look on your face.
My pleasure.
All right, so there is no public testimony, because this is an amendment to a commission binding report that we issued in 2022. So, but I will note that we did receive a letter from the Historic District's Council, which was shared with the commissioners in advance of today's hearing. All right, any other questions? Any final questions? Okay, so I think we'll move to our discussion then. So as I said, this is an amendment to an earlier approval for barrier-free access ramps, and there also have been approvals for extensive restoration. And there is a lot of really great work going on here that will make this building really extremely functional and, and I think celebrated by the residents and, and users of Orchard Beach. And the proposal today is to replace the windows with windows in a different operation, and that helps to achieve some of the thinner profiles. And so we'll, we'll have a discussion about that. Commissioner Mann, would you start this one?
Sure, I think this looks very straightforward. It's a minor request, the profiles and division, you know, is all consistent with the historic condition. You know, the facades are functionally secondary, you know, as, as noted, I can easily find this approvable.
Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I totally agree, and my memory of this place is attending the wedding, and so therefore I can attest that I never paid notice to this portion of the building in hurry to get to the beach where the wedding was held. So, and I think even with this fix or casement, I think the public will not notice it, but, but given the budget constraint, I can find this appropriate.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
I agree, appropriate.
Okay, Commissioner Goldblum?
Agreed. What a magnificent, magnificent project. It makes me sad to see it, because we don't do this kind of thing anymore very much, or you know, if we, much more rarely. This is such an Olympian project, it's so fantastic. And kudos to the city for taking it on and seeing it through despite the unforeseen conditions. This is totally appropriate.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Agreed.
Vice Chair Master?
Appropriate.
All right, Commissioner Quembe?
Yeah, I'd like to point out that I appreciate the, the rigor and thought that went behind, even though it's really simple, just seeing just the profiles maintaining themselves and choosing to fix some of the windows. And I think it was actually a very smart move to change the hopper into an awning. I think it was a smart decision.
Thank you, Commissioner Chu.
Appropriate.
Commissioner Wilder?
Appropriate.
All right, so I think we're all in agreement. Commissioner Mann, would you make the motion?
In the matter of LPC 25-09964, Orchard Beach Pavilion, Orchard Beach Bathhouse Individual Landmark. A modern, a modern classical-style waterfront recreation complex with Bozart's elements, designed by Amor Embry II and landscape architects Gilmore D. Clark and Michael Rapuano, and built in 1934 to 37. Application is to modify window details. I recommend that a favorable report be issued, finding that the windows to be replaced are located on a side facade and are in deteriorating condition, warranting replacement, that the replacement windows will match the historic windows in terms of configuration and finish, that the lack of the casement operation and the windows will, of the windows will enable a closer replication of the thin profiles of the historic window framing, and the bottom hopper window will remain operable, and that the change to fixed windows with hopper will not detract from the special architectural historic, or historic, character of the complex.
Yeah, and Commissioner Wilder, would you second that motion?
So second.
Thank you. Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Master?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Mr. Chu?
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Mr. Quembe?
Aye.
Mr. Jefferson?
Aye.
Your man?
Aye.
Your Wilder?
Aye.
With ten in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, that's approved, thank you. And we'll move to the next public meeting item.
The next item is public meeting item number two, docket number LPC 26-01388, an application for an amendment to a previously, previously issued C of A in the Borough of Brooklyn, Block 1947, Lot 36, 36. Thirty-five Clifton Place in the Clinton Hill Historic District. It's a transitional Italianate neo-Grec style row house designed by Benjamin Lineken and built in 1876. The application is to amend Certificate of Appropriateness 24-06739 to modify the design of the rooftop addition. The applicants are here to present the change once we open the proceedings.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilder, would you make a motion to open the proceedings? Just say so. Move.
So move.
Thank you. Commissioner Chu, would you second that motion? Commissioner Chu?
Second.
Thanks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, you may begin.
Hi, Brendan Coburn, applicant for this public meeting item. This is a, let's see, this is a project that was previously approved that has a fourth floor addition to the project. It's set back from the front facade. It's, it has a pitched roof on it, and it is, as designed, minimally visible from, from the, a little bit more visible from just outside the Landmarks District. We are here asking for a small modification, which is that building department has disagreed with our interpretation of stress from the building and is requiring us to have a bulkhead or a 20-degree pitch on our roof. And so we studied both options, and that's what we're going to show you, and we believe that the 20-degree pitch is preferable. I would note ahead of time that we've also filed with Technical Affairs a determination to get that, to stay with the existing design, but given that the contractor and client are ready to start construction, we really just need it approved, and hopefully we win our case. Top floor. So, this is just lies that most people, not here, when I was... Okay, so this is in the Clinton Hill Historic District. It's on the same one Clifton Place. It's on a block that has the Pratt School of Architecture at one end of it. Bunch of mostly, sorry, three and four stories, but predominantly three-story row houses on the north. but predominantly three-story row houses on the north. There, number 107. Oh, I can look it up here. So, what we're showing here is the previously, the... What was presented at the original public hearing, which we then pushed down a little bit because the... West that we tried to further suppress the height of the building, which we did. And these are the mock-up photos from that previous public hearing. So, this view on the left is the visibility of the mock-up, which you can see right over here. I'll have a rendering in a second. And then, and which is outside of the district. The district runs right down the center line of the street. This is the visibility from, also outside the district on the other side of the street. Within the district, I think there's almost no visibility. On our sightline diagram, you can see that this, this is the currently... Well, this is what we worked with staff to lower, the green line. Okay, so this, this little red line is now showing the revised height, which gets us the 20.05 degrees, which are approval from the DOB. You can see that from directly across the street, it remains out of sight. But from the other... So, on the left is the approved axonometric, and on the right is the altered axonometric. Left is an axon showing. And then, just these renderings showing on the left the previously approved and on the proposed new 20.5. District of the previously approved. So, the ridge has been moved up and the, but the cornice lines of this fourth floor. Elevation views. Color and materials. This is the approved and the proposed. Oh, there, sorry, there is a missing... A slide disappeared without I had included, which had the visibility of a stair bulkhead, which just looked like... That, that is, that is what we were requesting is this permission to use this 20-degree, 20.05 degree pitch.
Okay, Commissioner Ginsburg.
In the original approved drawings, there seemed to be three condenser units on the roof that have now disappeared. Where have they gone?
They've gone to the backyard.
Thank you.
That was another thing you guys asked us to get out of sight, yeah.
Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Chu, followed by Commissioner Wilder.
Sorry, just to remind us, because I do remember this application and her request to reduce the visibility from, I guess it's Grand Street, because there's that opening that you can see, the rear of the lot. Which drawing represents what was approved exactly in profile? Can you, sorry, summarize that again?
In this view or?
No, just from your section. I'm trying to... Okay.
Okay, so, the, the, the most... The green is what we came to the commission.
You first came with the green.
The gray is where we put it.
What was approved.
Yeah, approved. And the red is what we're requesting now.
Okay. Did you have solar panels?
Did.
And you got rid of them in the, in the, in... For the approved, those are already eliminated? Is that...
That is a good question. I don't, no, we still have.
You had them?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, in other words, the view comparison that you showed us from Grand Street is the approved versus the proposed? When you're looking at street, from street level on Grand? Because I know the street well. I can attest that you probably wouldn't see it from Clinton because it's very, there's a lot of trees there as well. Here, yeah.
This view.
Yeah.
No, this is our pushed-down view on the left. This is the one that we had reduced the visibility because it's missing the air conditioning units.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Other, Commissioner Wilder.
Quick question. Can you remind us what's driving the height and shape of the roof?
So, there is a, in the, in the building code, if you have a roof pitch more than 20 degrees, like just half a degree, you do not need to have a stair bulkhead which goes to the roof in a four-story building. Yeah, and it's, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't agree that the bulkhead is required because the fire department can enter the stair to egress the building from the setback at the third floor. And in that fight at some point. I have won it before with the DOB on different buildings, and Plan Examiner has got a new take on things.
Okay, so the issue is, is if it were, if it had a flat roof or even the roof that we ultimately approved working with the staff, DOB would require, we believe at this point, a bulkhead and a railing, right? And so, that would be also visible. And so, I know you're asking for a reconsideration, but in the meantime, they are proposing pitching the roof up so that they, the Plan Examiner will find that they don't need a bulkhead.
Can I just ask a quick, because I'm just curious about the, this potential exception? Is there a height from which you then start the 20-degree pitch that's, that's listed?
You mean, can I, are you?
You have the pitch, but what's...
I tried to push, I tried to push the starting point, the ridge back, and it's just like the interior space of this house is already under... Front, so I wasn't able to sort of manipulate, sort of create a dorm or something that, is that...
No, my question is that if you get your 20-degree or greater pitch, you're hoping that will eliminate the need for a stair bulkhead coming up. Is there a height that you have to hold that 20-degree pitch off the roof level? Does it have to be a minimum height before you start your 20-degree pitch? Okay. I mean, I assume that your section and your proposed height based on sightline visibility, you're trying to get as much height as you can. Can you just tell me more or less what, what height you have there?
Oh, you mean, oh, what, what did that?
Yeah, because at the end, it's all about this height increase, yes.
Yeah.
So, from, from your roof finished floor up?
Yeah, I think it's on the yellow.
Okay.
About three feet and change.
Of increase.
From 3810 to 423.
Do you need all that height?
Don't need it, but we needed, that's how we got our 20%.
No, I'm just saying, could you take that and just push it down?
Oh.
Is my question. Yeah, the addition, I'm...
No, at the front, at the front, it's, it's already, we don't even have...
That's what I'm trying to ask you. The headroom at the low end is driving your, your, your height.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, because I follow your pitch argument, but what's setting your height? Is trying to get minimum height to the low end?
It's minimum height to the low.
All right, thank you.
And Brendan, I know you're trying to preserve the footprint of the addition, but what would happen if you set the front back more and the ridge line then was pushed back more accordingly? Would that change the visibility in any significant way?
Well, I think it would exacerbate things at the rear.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't mean push the whole thing back. I mean, make it smaller.
Oh.
Yeah, just set back the front, and then that...
It's quite small already, and it's almost at the landing, at the top of the staircase.
Okay, got it, and that's already under construction.
Yeah, I mean, we squeezed and squeezed.
Okay. Commissioner Wilder, did you have another question? Okay. Anyone else? Okay, all right. So, I think we'll then move to our discussion if there are no other questions. So, this is a situation where we saw an application, which is represented in those green lines, and we approved it with the modification that they work with the staff to further reduce the visibility. And they did, and the gray mass is what was ultimately approved by the staff pursuant to the commission's direction. And then, at the Department of Buildings, the Department of Buildings is requiring a bulkhead with this particular roof slope. And unless they move the slope up, they believe they'll have a bulkhead, have to be required to do a bulkhead. And they have, or they are seeking a reconsideration, but at the moment today, we have to make a determination on whether something that follows that red line is appropriate, both in terms of its size and scale and its visibility. And again, the primary views are not really over the front facade, over the back facade, but there is some visibility over the front facade as well from outside of the district, but right across the street, looking over the row of buildings. All right, so we're going to have to begin this. Commissioner Goldblum, would you start this one?
Sure. I think it's appropriate. I think the visibility is minimal and is kind of subsumed by the front facade. But what I would suggest is that the staff reach out to the DOB at the technical level and get a decision on this. Something that comes up time and time again here. Bulkhead, no bulkhead, hatch, yo-hatch, physical... This 20% thing, it's come up before. Kiss and cath card, there's a big, very big to-do about it a few years ago. It's a very basic thing that we deal with every week. And having something that an applicant can rely on, that we can just say, here's a determination from the DOB, use this letter.
Yep.
It would be to everybody's benefit to have policy, you know, because Brendan is much too diplomatic to say it, but, you know, examiners are kind of, you know, get to run the show. And if he's had a bad lunch or something, you're going to have different objections than if he had a good lunch. So, I think it's, it's important to have a kind of consistent policy when we ourselves are confronted with the same thing and we're telling people that they can or can't do something based on presumptions. It's really important, and I think it's worth the bureaucratic effort to reach out to them and get this settled.
Yeah, agree 100%. Commissioner Ginsburg.
So, I agree with Commissioner Goldblum. I'd add that even if you get your determination, what they should do is issue a memorandum because determinations are only for the specific projects, so...
Right length.
But that's, hopefully, we can reach out. I would also, I agree that what's being proposed is better than the bulkhead. I would also say, I'm sad that you're removing the solar, and I would be happy to see that come back, even with the additional slope.
Yeah, and hopefully, the, even though you'll have an approval for this, the benefits of the solar panels will be an incentive to do the original design should you get that reconsideration. Right, Commissioner Chen.
Yeah. It's not only that, I think, you know, the predicament, you know, to be predictable and given so much rules and regulation in the city, it really drives up the cost because time is money. And I think that if we really want to truly make the city affordable and buildable, we really need to streamline this type of thing. But I love Commissioner Goldblum's suggestion of the rationale for basis of whether we get a good lunch from now on.
Yeah, all right, thank you. Commissioner Mayan.
I can find this approvable.
Commissioner Wilder.
Yeah, I find it appropriate.
Commissioner Chu.
I, I think it's appropriate. I think the applicant has explained well the situation there. And I do think that if this ultimately gets approved by DOB as an exception to the bulkhead, that this application should be reviewed by staff carefully because I think what we're approving is an ultimate mass, maximum mass visibility. And every piece of equipment, every gooseneck, every vent now goes beyond that. And I think we've got to be very careful because they're right at the line there.
Yeah. Good point. Commissioner Equembe.
I find it appropriate.
Vice Chair Master.
Appropriate.
And Commissioner Jefferson. All right, great, so I think we'll make a motion to approve this. Commissioner Goldblum.
Right. Regarding 35 Clifton Place in the Clinton Hill Historic District, LPC 26-01388, The application is to amend a C of A 2406739 to modify design of rooftop addition. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Clinton Hill Historic District. I recommend approval. Finding that the proposed work will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features at the rear of the rooftop addition we see in context of taller foreground buildings at the end of the row and that it will be disassociated from its own building as seen in roofscape views from Grant Avenue. And at the roofing membrane and flue extensions will be neutral in color and typical of rooftop conditions seen over central, secondary facades of row houses.
All right. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Vice Chair Master.
Aye.
Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Equembe.
Aye.
Mr. Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Mayan.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilder.
Aye.
Ten in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you. Good luck, and we'll move to the next public meeting item.
All right. Commissioners, the next item, Public Meeting Number Three for 164 Hancock Street, will be moved to a later agenda at the owner's request. So, we'll move on to Public Meeting Item Number Four, which is LPC 25-08899, An Application for a Certificate of Appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, Block 1096, Lot 48, 449 12th Street in the Park Slope Historic District Extension. This is an altered Romanesque revival-style stable building by, designed by George W. Kenny and built in 1903, or circa 1903. The application is to install a new stucco system on secondary facades. And this was read into the record at the public hearing of August 5, 2025, and it was not presented at that time, and no testimony was taken. So, we'll be seeing it for the first time today. And the applicants are here to present the proposal once we open the proceedings.
Okay, all right. And in this case, we'll open up the hearing since we did not take, listen to the presentation or take testimony at the last public hearing. So, Commissioner Equembe, would you make a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chu, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, the hearing is open, and you may begin.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Michael Granville. I'm with Darius Tarabee Architects. And I'm presenting today our proposed repairs for off-street exterior walls at 449 12th Street, which is located in the Park Slope of Historic District. This slide shows the front facade of the building. They're, of course, not working on, and the subject walls here at the back of the building. These are the walls in question. Both street frontage and are the two walls at the rear of the building, which are not visible from any public vantage point. The walls are currently clad in cement stucco, five-eighths of an inch thick, which was installed prior to the building being included in the expanded Park Slope Historic District. The stucco has extensive cracking all throughout its surfaces, ordinary cracking really for cement stucco. It's especially prevalent at window surrounds and at sills where the stucco implication was unreinforced, and there's quite a bit of cracking. And there's quite a bit of cracking at those areas and at other penetrations. The stucco assembly also lacks any water barrier in the form of felt backing on the lath reinforcement or a cavity between the original brick walls and the stucco itself, which is promoting water that gets absorbed by the porous stucco from soaking through and wetting the brick behind the stucco. This is resulting in really widespread moisture penetration and damage at the interior of the building. You can see that the walls are exposed brick. So the wall assembly is bare minimum for separating inside from outside right now. The interior damage manifests itself as deteriorating mortar, even some brick spalling, staining at sheet rock ceilings and finishes. And the walls are also extremely cold due to lack of any insulation in the wall assembly, which has resulted in mold and condensation mold formation on the back of artwork, for instance, and behind wood baseboards and other conditions like that. This next slide is just showing the widespread nature of the moisture penetration, both near windows and at opaque walls away from windows. And on, show you a series of slides of the interior block conditions. The building's surrounded by a variety of different structures, other old mill construction buildings like this one, next to ours to the west, a newly, relatively newly constructed infill building, also from, you know, obviously built before the designation. And quite a lot of walk-up apartment buildings fronting 11th Street with its rear walls facing the rear wall of 449 12th Street. Most of the exterior wall surfaces on the surrounding buildings, really all of them, are brick. Most have been coated with some, either just paint or cementitious coating. Our darker gray stucco is a little bit of an anomaly, being darker than most of what's around it. Just a couple of other views of our current conditions at our wall and what it would look like afterwards. These are some slides of a little more detail of the surrounding interior block context. Just showing window sills, and you can see brick beneath coatings. And here are drawings of the existing conditions on the left and what we're proposing on the right. What we're proposing to install to address the issues at the building is an additional cladding layer.
System.
The system we're proposing is an exterior insulation finish system, or EFS for short. It's an acronym that I'm sure you've heard. In our design, we are leaving the stucco layer that's currently there in place in order to avoid damaging the building by trying to remove it. We are adding to that another layer of stucco lath, which is a way of ensuring that the system stays put and is well attached to the building. Prior to installing that lath, we would be roller applying a waterproofing layer on top of the existing stucco, then the lath, then adhering two inches of insulation to that, and then applying a trowel-applied reinforced stucco-like coating consisting of a base layer and a reinforcing scrim and a trowel-applied finish coat. At the windows, we are proposing to install a heavy gauge form metal sill to recall the existing slight protrusion of brick roloch sills that are now covered in stucco. Next slide are just plan drawings of the current conditions and the proposed conditions. We're planning to return sheet metal panning at the window jams as well in order not to visually reduce the width of the windows too much. Showing how we'll be resecuring a leader pipe to the outside and an elevation drawing of the north wall of the building, elevation drawing of the east wall of the building. At the top of the building, there are very large bundles of cable and telephone wiring that we're proposing to leave where they are and stop our cladding system four to six inches short of the underside of the terracotta copings, which we're not changing. And to install a metal flashing to seal the top of our system and to tuck up behind those wires. Slide is a photo of what it looks like currently and a rendering of what it would look like after the work is done. The system that we're using, there are many manufacturers of these. Stowe is one that we like. They're a European company, and their product is quite good. And they have a special assembly for retrofitting existing masonry buildings. And that is what we're doing here. These photos are from another project in Brooklyn, not a landmark, showing the yellow-colored waterproofing layer, the lath that gets attached over that, the insulation that is adhered to that lath. And this image is of the base coat of the trowel-applied finish before the finish coat is put on. Our finish coat will be fine sand finish. I brought samples. I don't know if they've been passed around to show what that finish will be. It's quite stucco-like. It's not glossy-looking. And I feel we'll do a good job of maintaining the basic appearance of the building, although obviously it cleaned up. So in conclusion, the building is facing heavy water penetration, interior damage, an existing stucco application that is underdesigned and in not great shape, although well attached to the building. And there's an underinsulated wall in all respects. And we feel that all of those factors led us to recommend that we improve the energy efficiency and R-value of the wall assembly of the building and guard against the bulk water intrusion that's been happening by installing this additional cladding layer.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Ginsburg, followed by Commissioner Chu, and then Commissioner Jefferson.
All those cables that you're preserving, what do they go for? Could you move them inside the parapet?
I suppose that's not impossible. You know, we've all seen them on the insides of parapets, yeah.
Right. I have dealt with them. The cable and the phone company come and just tack them up wherever. I've had them tacked up in roof membranes, and then people are wondering why the roof leaks. So I understand the problem. And if you can't get them to move it, this is a pretty elegant solution. But it might be better if you could. The other question I have, and there may not be any good solution, at the window returns, you're in effect having a thermal break because you're not putting any insulation in there. And I don't know if there's any way without significantly narrowing the openings to do that, and you don't want to move the window far. It's a tricky issue, but I just.
In fact, I may have other jam detail here. Where we return one inch of insulation in.
If you could do that, that would obviously be better from a long-term perspective.
So here we go, yeah.
And I.
That's kind of an oblique view for me, isn't it?
Right. Yeah, exactly. If you could do that, it would be better, and I'd suggest working with staff if we can work that out. I realize it's a balance because you don't want to lose too much window. At the same time, you know, the other thing that you didn't directly mention is by putting the insulation is the brick won't go through freeze thaw, except for at that joint. And if you could do something to prevent it there, that would be a good thing because then if any water gets in, you're not going to have damage.
That was definitely a motivation for putting insulation on the outside.
Oh, right.
To stop freezing in the wall and to stop further breakdown of this 120-year-old red common brick from freeze thaw.
Thank you.
Commissioner Chu?
Yeah. The existing brick walls all full, is it how many, three, four wise?
Four, yeah.
Four wise of brick. Okay. I mean, this is a very common wall assembly for New York City. In my house, it's the same thing. My question is, in your details, you always indicate that you're leaving the existing poorly-applied existing plaster on brick. Why not remove it completely?
Well, it, you know, it has its issues. Its surface is sanding a little. It has hairline cracks. But it's very well secured to the building, and it is, that's done by mechanically attaching metal lath to the brick. And we're concerned that trying to remove that, the act of removing that, is going to be destructive. So we'd like to avoid disturbing it, as long as it's sound and well attached, which it is.
Okay. And that it's had its proper time to cure because you're going to waterproof outside of that now?
Well, I mean, the existing stucco predates the designation whenever that was in, around 2012, might have been when the Park Slope District was expanded. So it's not a matter of curing, but it is a matter of timing the application of the waterproofing well so that we're not putting it over a recently soaked.
That's what I mean. Yeah. The moisture trap is always the.
The waterproofing is breathable also, but.
Like a stucco flex stow system. Right. Okay. And the last thing I would say is regarding your detail at the head where you're, the existing lines are, probably lots of them are cable lines that are dead, and they just don't get cut out. I, yeah, I agree with Mark because I also don't really like that detail. I think that that's a weak point in your wall assembly where water can infiltrate and bringing that up to the coping would be a much better seal at the top. Yeah. If you were to keep that, I would suggest you turn something more than just flashing over your assembly over the top of that. Yeah, let's zoom in detail right there.
All right. Commissioner Jefferson?
It's a technical question. The brick is saturated. But how do you know when the brick, how do you put, if the brick is saturated, you have to wait till it dries out before you put this new facade on? How do you navigate that? That's a question I always had in my office.
It's not easy. What's important, of course, is that the wall still be able to breathe. So if there's any moisture still trapped within that wall, there's a high enough perm rating of any coating you're putting on it that water vapor can pass out. And we certainly wouldn't apply the waterproofing portion of this after recent rain. It's a weather timing issue, sort of a contractor construction phase issue to limit that.
The mold, the mold, the mold issue remains. You have to put cloaks on it forever to get rid of the mold, is that what?
Well, I mean, that's true, but what's interesting about the mold formation issue is it has a lot to do with temperature. We're actually having mold, seeing mold forming on the backside of, going back to some other photos earlier, photos, on the backside of artwork and on the backside of wood baseboards that are running around the perimeter of the rooms. And part of the reason is these walls get freezing cold in the wintertime, and there's enough of a humidity differential that we're getting dew point on objects inside the rooms because the walls get so cold. So the insulation will help a lot with that. What we've done with the analysis of the dew point and where it would form, would it freeze or not? How much insulation do we need? In truth, maximize the energy efficiency benefit for the building apart from all the water management issues. We'd love to put four inches of insulation on this building. If the commission would approve that, I think we would do that. But two inches is sufficient to achieve the changes in the performance of the building envelope to prevent the walls from being too cold inside.
Okay. Yep. Commissioner Wilder?
The front portion of that sidewall, is that, is the full height of that above the roof? Is that all parapet or?
No, there's some exterior wall.
So what's the reason for not doing similar application there?
Two, there's two reasons. One is if we run the system further towards the street, it will be visible from the street. And two, the extensive problems that they're reporting are not appearing in that section of the building.
Commissioner Goldblum, and then we'll come back to Commissioner Chu.
So in your EFS sill option, you don't show a drip. Is that, is there a reason for that?
Well, what we're hoping, what our preferred detail would be, is metal sill. That does have a drip.
Okay, so that's the preferred one. Okay. All right. And are there going to be joints in this facade? You know, movement joints, scoring joints? Don't they require them at a certain interval?
We've reviewed this extensively with Stowe Technical department and the technical staff. And there, yes, there are details like this, but what we are, going to the next slide. What we would like to do at the ground, at the first floor level, because both of these walls front occupied garden spaces that are pretty small, is to thin the assembly down at the first, from this line down.
Right.
And there will be a continuous horizontal expansion joint at that level. And Stowe has advised us that we do not need them, neither vertical nor horizontal, on the floors above with the system.
Okay.
Right now, there are continuous horizontal expansion joints in the stucco at sill level. And if that would make a difference to the commission's point of view about how we're doing this, then they can certainly be added, but we reviewed this with the technical staff at Stowe, and they're not required for the performance of the system.
Thank you.
All right.
Oh, one last thing. The wires that are kind of going across at the lower level, those are going to remain, right?
Unfortunately, yeah.
And those are, do you know what they serve? Are they cable? Are they power?
There aren't any power cables.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
But there are cable and telephone lines that are running. If there's anything that we can identify that is abandoned and not in use, we'll get rid of it for sure.
This is a technical question back. The parapet, you don't have any insulation on that. It still would go through there also.
On the backside of the parapet.
Yeah. The voice would go through, work its way down.
Well, it, that's a good point, but I don't think that that's what they're suffering from based on our review of the conditions there. I do think, for one thing, the walls that we're talking about are in the north and east exposures of the building. And they're getting heavy weather out of the northeast. they're getting heavy weather out of the northeast as the building does. That's where the hard wind comes from much of the time. Uh, it's low rise fabric, uh, east of them, you know, the buildings on Eleventh Street don't provide any buffer at all. And the building is northeast orientation is sticking out a little bit like a prow. Facing all of that weather. I think the, I think the blasting is, is more oriented from the area we're cladding than from the inside of the parapet.
Commissioner Chu, did you have another question?
Because I think this is something we see quite often in terms of cladding, overcladding on historic masonry facades. And the only question, I think that the Stowe system is, is, it's highly used and, and it's got a long track record. I've used different versions of it many times, but my question is, did you explore mineral wool instead of rigid insulation? It probably would have made a thicker padding because of the performance, but it is fireproof, waterproof and has a lot of great properties to it. It's a very different assembly, I'm aware. You have to channel out so you have the space and then you apply the rigid board and all that. But just wondering if your analysis ever covered that and, and you were decided to go this way.
Uh, what we like about, um, this particular assembly is the lath component behind the EPS insulation. So we get really good securement of the system to the building. Of course, you can get that with the sub girt system that you're describing. Another factor, of course, is the cost of the, of the insulation and EPS is a familiar technique and there are contractors that specialize it. That was a factor as well.
Dimension, I think, would also be a factor considering the conditions of historic building window sizes and whatnot, as Mark raised earlier. That would increase a lot more. Okay, um, the coping, again, I just look at it because that's that awkward thing because you're building out the facade and the coping is setting back. And that just feels a bit odd. Is there a way to get a camel back that's wider and actually lap your new assembly? Because that would be a great, that would be the right detail for the parapet. Yeah.
It's very loud when you're looking at it from a drone.
Right.
But.
Yeah.
That's the view from below.
I am actually even saying this more from, because you, you're obviously very technically knowledgeable about facade systems and, and that just makes a really nice ideal cap at the top to seal everything you've done. That's great to, to, to better insulate the building. That, that'd be a final touch.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? All right, no other questions, then I think we'll move to our discussion. Sorry, this is a hearing. We have to see if there's, um, anyone who would like to speak on this item, and I don't think we have anyone in the hearing room to speak on this item. So I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Those joining us via Zoom who wish to offer remote testimony, please use the raise hand function. All right, our first speaker will be Kaylee Johnson. I'll be elevating you to panelists, after which we ask you to unmute yourselves, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Hello, commissioners, this is Kaylee Johnson with the Historic District Council. HTC finds this proposal to be inappropriate. ITHs systems are completely ineffective and will only hasten this building's demise by trapping even greater amounts of water within the masonry wall. The correct solution would involve repairs to the parapet, parapet flashing, coping stone, and the application of a cementitious stucco system or breathable coating. This applicant's proposal is the opposite of what the situation requires. Thank you.
Anyone else joining us via Zoom who wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function. All right, seeing none, I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Six sent a letter of no objection.
All right, thank you. Would you like to respond to the comments we've heard?
Oh, sure. I've looked at other alternatives for the building as well, including applications of cementitious coatings and with respect to adding coatings to the building, while the stucco is basically sound, it's aging and, and, uh, ever run your hand on an aging stucco wall, it is a little bit loose and sandy. And we didn't think that a long term waterproofing solution could be rolled or brushed onto this existing stucco. Also, the, uh, underinsulating, underinsulated wall assembly is a real factor in the performance inside. And applying a rolled or brushed on coating does nothing to improve the insulating value of the wall assembly. So, um, we really felt the unique factors here drove us to the recommendations that we made.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any final questions? Now we'll close the hearing and move to our discussion. Vice Chair Master, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Thank you, Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion on this, uh, application to apply, uh, the, the new EFS insulation system to the exterior rear facade here. And I would just to provide context, note that the commission has approved similar installations on, uh, minimally visible or non-visible rear facades um, on other buildings and that, uh, this rear facade is not visible. It's also in a very tight space, um, in its context. There are other buildings with white colored, uh, sort of off-white and, and gray and cream colored stucco applications. So I think it's in this tight context and adjacent to other buildings with a similar finish. So that's one thing that you can consider. And I think the other thing is, um, what we've really been talking about are these sort of technical questions about the, about the system and about the performance of the building. So we'll start. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you start this one?
Love to. So in general, I think this is the rational proposal of how to deal with a unfortunate situation. And I think it's appropriate. I have two comments, both which could be dealt with with staff. If other commissioners feel the same, I would have no problem with four inches of insulation, which would make the building more energy efficient. Again, as it discussed, actually now I have three comments. The detail around the window of trying to wrap the insulation, uh, would create a better thermal envelope. Thirdly, the rendering, and this may be somewhat the rendering, hazard is very white. And the existing is, uh, light gray and I would work with staff to pick, because you can basically do any color. And he's something that is a little grayer than the white shown, but that's minor. And I think this is a, a totally appropriate solution to a difficult situation.
Commissioner Chen.
Uh, I'm in agreement, uh, and I'm in support of the four inches as well.
Commissioner Mayan.
I can find this appropriate.
Commissioner Wilder.
I think it's appropriate.
Commissioner Chu.
I think it's appropriate. Just with the comments that I had made earlier, I'd like the applicant to work with staff on the coping, parapet coping detail. Then I do think that the comment that was made earlier about waterproofing on the, on the, on the roof by Everardo was valid as well. If we're going to spend the investment to, I think in terms of the intent of this, totally appropriate, it's something that's going to help sustain a longer life to this building. I just would like it to be done, a, a couple of things, work with staff in order to make it, um, really a nice sealed envelope performance wise.
Commissioner Equembe.
Find it appropriate, and I'm in agreement with Commissioner Chu, especially and, uh, Commissioner Jefferson about the, uh, the exposed portion of the parapet and also working out the coping detail.
Thank you. Vice Chair Master.
This is appropriate.
Commissioner Jefferson. And Commissioner Goldblum. Okay, so I think we're in agreement, but we, and we can make a motion to approve it, but we'll ask them to continue to work with the staff on all of the details, including wrapping insulation at the windows, managing the parapet, both the inside and the outside, and how the coping intersects with that, or interfaces with the intersection there.
Okay. With regards to LPC twenty-five dash oh eight eight nine nine four four nine, Twelfth Street, Park Slope Historic District, an altered Romanes Revile style, stable building designed by George W. Kenny and built in nineteen oh three, application is to install a new stucco system on secondary facades. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural historic character of the Park Slope Historic District Extension. I recommend approval that the installation of EFS cladding system at the simply designed and fully coated secondary facade will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the proposed work will not be visible from any public thoroughfare, that the work will address deterioration of the building due to extensive water infiltration and assorted masonry damage and will provide a needed insulation, that the white color and trowel finish of the final stucco coating will help the cladding to recall the character of traditional stucco applications commonly found at secondary facades of buildings within the block and historic district, that the limited thickness of the coating and masonry facades will not significantly change the character of the facade, that the proposed metal cladding will help provide a watertight barrier. The brickwork sills feature a profile that recalls the sills and will be painted white to match the surrounding stucco, that the work will be within a portion of the block with several simply designed and painted coated secondary facades, therefore will not detract from the surrounding buildings, that the change in thickness of the cladding at the first floor and beneath the parapet coping will be simply detailed and discreet variations of the cladding, and the work will not detract with the special architectural and historic character of the building or the Park Slope Historic District. And the applicant will work with staff to work on the window details, uh, protection of the interior and top of the parapet, and if appropriate, additional insulation.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark.
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Vice Chair Master.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum. Commissioner Equembe.
Aye.
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 Wild.
Aye.
Ten in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
So that's approved, thank you. Well, please continue to work with the staff on those details and we'll move to the next item.
The next, the next item is public meeting item number five, docket number LPC two five one oh five three three, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block five thirteen, Lot seven, one forty-two Green Street in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. This is a store building designed by Henry Fernbach and built in eighteen seventy-one. The application is to disassemble and reassemble the cast iron facade, remove the fire escape, remove the rear portion of the building and replace the rear facade, modify the rear extension, construct a rooftop addition and excavate the cellar. This was last presented at the public hearing of June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, and no action was taken at that time. The applicants are here to present revisions to the proposal based on your comments once we open the proceedings.
And we'll do that right now. Commissioner Equembe, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
So moved.
Thank you, Vice Chair Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, you may begin.
Perfect. Good morning, still, uh, Commissioners Cass, Ackleberg, Higgins, Quays, Barthon Partners. Nice to see you all. Joined by my colleague Jonathan Taylor. We have most of the project team with us in person, Joe Vance from Joe Vance Architect and Valerie Campbell from HSF Kramer, um, via Zoom. We also have, um, Martin Griggs and Dorian Yurcek from Walter B. Melvin Architects and at Oppenheimer from TY Lynn Silman. In case there are questions, I'm going to go through the presentation, but the team, uh, the team is available, uh, for, for questions, of course, and discussion. As we, as we discussed back in June when we presented this project, uh, to the commission, uh, the project involves the restoration and adaptive reuse of this five story cast iron fronted building, the Soho Cast Iron Historic District, and the conversion of the building to residential use. Uh, and we presented basically four areas of work as part of, uh, as part of that project. There was a.
Cass, can you please speak more into the mic so we can pick you up?
Okay.
If I know you have to bend over, you're too tall, sorry.
I, I hate bending over, so I'm going to sort of do this and just look, just look that way. So there are, uh, four, four primary areas of, um, of work, facade, repair and restoration, uh, which, uh, as we presented, will include the disassembly of the cast iron facade, off-site restoration and then reassembly on site. As well, uh, removing the outer wire, the brick and the stucco on the side elevation of the building and reconstructing that, uh, that side elevation in, in, in red brick. Reconstruction of the building's rear facade, uh, and as well, uh, excavation and, uh, and some limited underpinning. As well, there's the construction of a two-story rooftop addition. And the commissioners were comfortable really with the, the first three aspects of that, uh, of that scope, the, the restoration scope, uh, the rear, the work in the rear elevation, uh, which is not visible, the underpinning and excavation work. And it was really the discussion about the rooftop addition, um, where, uh, there was an acceptance of the design of the addition, um, and, and support for the design, but a request to reduce visibility and to, um, reduce visibility of the addition and the mechanical screen around the units on the upper, on the upper floor. Uh, in response to those comments, the team has worked and reduced the overall height, um, by four feet, and you'll see that in our visibility studies, three feet within the addition and one foot, uh, on the upper roof, uh, of the mechanical screen. And while the discussion today will focus on the rooftop, um, because, uh, it's actually half of the commissioners today were not here back in June. Um, I'm going to give a little bit of background, uh, because I think it's relevant in understanding the overall history of the building, its relationship to a building, um, over here at one sixty-five Mercer Street, which is, uh, uh, an interesting historical note and, uh, a, a template for some of our restorative treatments, but as I said, the focus of the discussion today will be the, very much on, um, on the rooftop, uh, the rooftop scope. Um, an existing view of the building from across the street, um, facade, uh, done in cast iron, five stories. Uh, it was designed by Henry Fernbach, who is a prolific architect in the district, uh, responsible for thirty-one buildings in the district, five of which all but five were, were cast iron fronted buildings. Um, and it was built in eighteen seventy-one, and interestingly was built at the same time as a building, uh, on Mercer Street, also designed by Fernbach. The, the, the cast iron is in fair condition. There's evidence of rusting. There are replacement elements that have been done in fiberglass. The fire escape that you see on the right image, uh, has actually, which is not historic or not, not original to the building, has had a negative effect on, on the, uh, overall, uh, performance of the historic facade. Uh, and then there's, there's rusting and, and various conditions seen, uh, across the facade, which will all be addressed in the, in the restoration program. As I mentioned, um, uh, the building, uh, at one forty-two Green Street on the left, uh, was actually designed as a twin, uh, to one sixty-five Mercer Street. These were both designed by Fernbach and, uh, completed within months of each other in eighteen seventy-one. And owing to the prefabricated nature of cast iron, one could have buildings that actually matched one another in this district. And it's a, it's a sort of very interesting condition that, uh, one doesn't, uh, perhaps notice when walking the street, but doing research and, and looking closely, um, these two buildings do match the two detailed photos on the right, um, obviously illustrating identical cast iron detailing. And the building, uh, at one sixty-five Mercer Street is going to serve i- in some parts as a template for the restoration. The cast iron, um, cornice that remains or the pressed metal cornice that remains on Mercer Street, that cornice was removed from one forty-two Green Street following a fire in the nineteen twenties. And so we're going to use, uh, the detailing, uh, of the, of the original cornice on Greens, uh, on Mercer Street as the template for a restored cornice on Green Street. Uh, I'll also note that the commission approved back in twenty seventeen the removal of the fire escape that was at one sixty-five Mercer Street. Um, and we're looking to do the same here, uh, on Green Street. Some details of the underlying conditions that really led the team to, uh, propose the dismantling of the facade. The offsite restoration is going to allow for a much more comprehensive and effective restoration treatment. The two images, uh, on the far left just illustrate cracking and displacement of the various stacked cast iron elements that make up the vertical columns of the system, um, pretty apparent. And obviously, that displacement then leads to water infiltration down the line and, and further degradation. The two images in the middle of the slide illustrating, uh, a view down, uh, onto the fire escape, just illustrating how it was basically stapled right onto the top edge of these water tables that run horizontally across the front facade. There are hundreds of penetrations associated with the attachment of the fire escape. And then the photo in the bottom middle just illustrates the, the warping and, and impact of the weight of the fire escapes on the water tables, and that occurs at floors two, three, and four. And then the two photos on the right illustrate replacement materials across the facade. There are sections of fiberglass, which have been installed across the tops of the water tables, and then plywood underneath those. Those were approved as part of a 2005 restorative staff level permit. And I think the idea back then was that these were going to be sort of interim measures, but they have not weathered well and, and as well sort of provide for the long-term degradation of the facade. So the overall proposal is to dismantle the facade, strip it, doing all this in a controlled environment offsite with access to all sides of the, the cast iron elements, which will then be primed and painted, both on the front and the back, and then brought back onsite and reassembled in their, in their current position. And then a rendering of the proposed facade. I think first and foremost, obviously the restored facade, the cast, the, the pressed metal cornice matching that at 165 Mercer Street, new wood windows, storefront infill, a cast iron painted to match historic finish analysis, and then the rooftop addition, which is not visible from directly across the street. So turning to, to, to the details and the changes at the roof. As I mentioned, the commissioners were comfortable with the design of the addition, calling it handsome and respectful of the modular quality of the floors below. But there was a request to evaluate the heights, some of the floor heights, and, and the visibility and to address that as part of a return to, to this public meeting. This is a building section, this is what we presented back in, in June. And I'll just sort of draw your attention to the top floors of, of the, of the building. So this top floor, as proposed, the fifth floor at 12 feet, and then the two additional floors at 11 feet each. And then up at the roof, mechanicals and a mechanical screen shown at seven foot three. These floor heights, particularly the 12-foot height, that's, that's about average for, for the existing height of the existing building, which you can see has this steep sloping roof. So in response to the comments from the commissioners, we've done a few things. So first and foremost, we have taken the, the two-floor addition and sunk it down into the body of the building. So that, that allows us to pick up two feet by, by basically taking this volume and dropping it down. So this now from 12 feet goes to 11 six, and we, we push these two floors down. This floor remains at 11 foot, but because, because of the two-foot drop, it actually reduces the visibility of that element. And then the top floor goes from 11 feet to 10 feet. And then finally, the fourth foot is picked up by reducing the mechanical screen, which was visible from a very long view on Bleeker Street, bringing that down one foot. These two comparative detail sections, I think, illustrate this as well. Again, so looking at the dimensions back here, two, two 11-foot floor heights here, brought down to 11 and 10. And then at the front, I think significantly here, you can see at this section here where the two-foot dimension, reducing the height of the, the, the floor level down into the body of the building, we pick up those two feet there. And then up at the top of the building, a seven-foot-three mechanical screen now shown at six-foot-three. So overall, as I said, a four-foot reduction in height, which we think has a significant effect on, on the visibility from the street. I'll also just mention there's a, a change that does not affect visibility, but the, the plane of, of the glazing here on these two floors has been pushed out one foot to accommodate a code, a, a building code compliance issue associated with the stair. But you'll see that this, the dimension, the setback dimension at 21 feet of the, the horizontal sort of cornice members, that is unchanged. So the, the addition, you know, noted is set back 21 feet, and then now four feet lower. A series of detail elevations going around the building. This is the front elevation, the, the west elevation. This is what was presented back in June. And then the reduction and the detailing shown here in this revised. We repeated this detail just for the commissioners who didn't see this previously. The whole system will be constructed in, in bronze. It's got an articulation and depth that we think relates very nicely to the articulation and shadow that one sees across the cast iron facade. We have our material samples, it's a heavy bronze sample. We pass it around if you'd like, but we do have that in case anybody wants to see that. Turning to the, to the other, some of the other details. So this is just some further detailing, these horizontal, sort of heavy horizontals, referencing the water tables that exist on the, on the floors below, and then the bronze detailing that's part of the system. The, the north elevation, the, the, the organization of this has changed a little bit because of the reduction in height. And this is the, the revised, the sort of panelized system. Again, most of this is not visible. The only part that is visible is really just this, this corner here and this corner, as you'll see in the view studies. The, the south elevation has been simplified. This is what was shown previously, and this is what is proposed, sort of a simple bronze panel system at this level and the screen wall beyond on the top floor. And then the rear elevation as well, simplified, taking out some of the, the sort of sill panels at the, at the lower floor. This is the, the rendered elevation that was presented back in June, and then the updated rendered, rendered elevation shown here with the reduced height. As I mentioned, the, the cast iron facade will be painted in accordance with finish analysis, wood windows across the upper floors, wood storefront infill at the ground floor, and then this bronze and glass system across the top. And as I mentioned, the commissioners were comfortable with the design of the addition and its relationship from, to, a relationship to the historic facade below, but it was really focused on the visibility that was, that was the discussion. The rear elevation, what was presented in June, and then the lower version, simplified version with the update. Again, none of this work is visible from, from the public way. So turning to the, to the visibility studies, I'll stop here just for a moment to, to note a couple of things. One, the visibility is really only limited to, to the north of the building. There is no visibility from the south. And much of the visibility occurs actually sort of within Houston Street. So there's some visibility along the west side of Green Street up to the corner of Houston, but as you'll see, there's a large portion here sort of within Houston Street, and then some on the north side of Houston here. There is one long view, which you see represented with this red dashed line up here on Bleeker Street, and that's been significantly enhanced by the overall reduction that, that was described here. So these are comparable views. On the left is what was presented in June. On the right, for all these slides, is the update. So again, a reduction in the overall height. And while this wasn't mentioned by the commissioners at the hearing, there was a railing that was going to be visible over this parapet. That's now with a overall reduction, not visible on that side elevation. Moving up toward Houston Street, a pretty significant reduction in visibility of the addition, but also, as I mentioned, reduction or even elimination of this railing that one would see over, over the side elevation. I'm turning, turning now to the north. So this is now looking south across Houston Street, what you saw back in June and the revised, the revised visibility here on the right. A couple of things to note, I think here, while you do see the addition, you don't really see it in the context of the historic facade, which I think is significant, but you're also seeing it in the context of these other rooftop features. So this building on the corner is a commission-approved new construction from about 25 years ago, a brick facade, but it has this sort of pronounced penthouse feature here. And then the historic building to the south also has these sort of interesting sort of cubic forms that one sees up on the roof. So I think sort of seeing the addition in this context, in this position, I think could be found, could be found appropriate given what one sees elsewhere in this immediate, in this immediate view. And then this long view from across the, the planted areas in Silver Towers. This is what, what was shown previously. And basically what you're seeing here is some of the addition, but the mechanical screen here. And with that four-foot reduction in height, that nearly disappears from this very, very long view. We've also included a couple additional views. There was some discussion about sort of representing the visibility and, and being sure that that was clearly explained and illustrated for the commissioners. And so we've included a few additional views. As I said, some of the visibility is, is from within Houston Street. This is a view from the median between the eastbound and westbound traffic. And you see just a very slim bit of the addition here peeking up over that side elevation. And then as you continue across Houston Street to the north side within the crosswalk, there is no, there is no visibility. If you move slightly to the, to the west, this is similar to the view you saw before. There is a bit of visibility, but again, it's sort of seen in the context of these sort of variegated roofscapes, both historic buildings and also commission-approved buildings directly to the north. And then just finally returning back to this rendered view from across, across the street. Again, you know, a variety of components to this project. The commission was comfortable with the, the restorative treatments and, and off-site restoration of the cast iron, work at the rear elevation, the, the, the low-grade scope. And the discussion really was about the rooftop, which we think has been enhanced and improved by this overall reduction in height. And we're happy to take any questions that you all may have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Wilder?
Is the existing bulkhead visible from any angles?
Existing? I don't, no, it's not.
Although not uncommon in Soho for there to be bulkheads that are visible, and sometimes at the very front, the elevator shaft would be right behind the windows in many of the historic buildings. Okay, any other questions? Okay, I think we'll move to our discussion. I will note that we did receive letters from nine individuals, which have been shared with the commissioners in advance of today's public meeting. And so this is an application that involved an extensive restoration project that included dismantling the facade, off-site restoration and reassembly, and the rooftop addition and modifications to the rear. And I would say that the, you know, we had a lot of discussion about the facade restoration. And I think the last time we saw this, the commissioners were very interested in it, but also all supported the proposed restoration. I think finding that the, the team is very skilled and, and there's a lot of trust in the team to do this right. And of course, the history of, of these cast iron buildings being kits of parts anyway. So we really focused our comments on the rooftop addition. There were some commissioners who were comfortable with it as is, others who asked for it to be reduced in size and visibility. And, and the applicants have reduced it by four feet, also eliminated this, the view of this railing. And these views are from the north, sort of an oblique angle from the north. Some of them are quite distant, but I think, you know, slides 24 and 25 really show the main views where you see it in the context of the historic facade and directly in that, above that facade. So we'll begin our discussion. I think Commissioner Chu, last time you had, as I said, supported the restoration work, but did ask that they try to reduce the floor-to-floor heights and the mechanical height. And you were comfortable with the design of the rooftop addition. Okay, so how are you, how do you feel about the changes?
Yeah, I, I remember this application, and I do remember also feeling it was a very well-designed, and I really do like the concept that you are going to do the addition with standard details. It could be essentially, maybe not fabrication-wise, but could be a kit of parts. I like the, the fact that that aesthetic is a modern version of what was historically a kit of part facade. In terms of the massing, I do think the applicant has, has, has listened and, you know, made significant change to this. In terms of visibility, I do think the mention of the guardrail is significant. We didn't talk about it specifically, but I think I, I really like the section better. I, I do think that setting the addition into the roof and having the roof parapet actually act as the guardrail makes a lot of sense. And I, I liked that nestling of the addition into the roof scape. I think this is appropriate. I always liked the design, I still like the design, and I think that it's less visible. And if you can see it, it's a handsome roof addition.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wilder, I think you were not here the first time this was presented, but you've seen the proposal now and the changes.
Yeah, I didn't participate in the first presentation, but I agree. I like, I like the, one of the images where it showed where it went from the original height to its current height. And it, it didn't feel like it before, but on the rendering, it did feel like a dramatic difference in, in height and bulk of the roof addition. So I think overall, it's a good project, so I find it appropriate.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Mann? It's also your first time seeing it, but you've heard the evolution here.
And I'm sorry I missed the, the first time around. It's an exquisite project. Kudos to the project team, both for the restoration and, and the new addition, both of which are just impeccably tailored, both in their proportion and, you know, incredible materiality, but also in their, you know, philosophical approach, which is aligned to the original intent of the building, to the matter at hand. The applicant appears to have been creatively responsive to the comments made last time. I can find this appropriate.
Commissioner Chen?
Same here.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Appropriate.
All right, Commissioner Goldblum?
Yeah, I think it's appropriate also. I just would ask the staff to have a good look at how this develops in terms of the storefront. We really didn't talk about that a whole lot, but there was some discussion last time about the, how the storefront looks from the streetscape, from, from the street, given that half of it's a lobby and half of it's some unspecified commercial use. I just think it, they should pay attention to, to continuity of the streetscape experience and its compatibility with Soho.
Okay. Commissioner Jefferson? Commissioner, oh, sorry, Vice Chair Mastor?
Appropriate.
Okay, and Commissioner Equembe?
Appropriate as well.
Okay, so we'll make a motion to approve Commissioner Chu, and, and we can ask the applicants to continue to work with the staff as they develop the storefronts. Okay.
In the case of LPC 2510533, 142 Green Street, Soho Cast Iron Historic District, a store building designed by Henry Fernbach, built in 1871. Application is to disassemble and reassemble the cast iron facade, remove the fire escape, remove the rear portion of the building, replace the rear facade, modify the rear extension, and construct a rooftop addition and excavate the cellar. And note that the building scale, style, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the fire escape to be removed is not original to the building, nor is it highly decorative or part of the continuous grouping of fire escapes, and its attachments are causing damage to historic cast iron facade. The temporary off-site removal of the cast iron facade components will help correct misalignments and allow the use of advanced equipment in controlled environment for the thorough removal of rust and coatings, numerous complex repairs and painting of the back sides of the units, much of which is not possible onsite. And the reinstallation of the salvaged cast iron fronting and new backup wall will replicate the historic condition. That the cast iron will be stored in a secure, dry location when offsite. That the removal of the rear building and construction of new rear facades, reducing the projection of the upper floors into the rear yard to comply with zoning setback requirements for light and air, will support the adaptive reuse of the building as a residence and will not be visible from a public thoroughfare. That the replacement of the existing utilitarian rear facade and extension with similarly designed rear facades will not change the building's typology or detract from its historic industrial character. That the new brick-clad rear facades featuring punch windows with limestone lintels and sills will be consistent with the secondary facades of the buildings throughout the historic district in terms of its materials and color palette, solid-to-void ratio, regular pattern of punch masonry openings and simple detailing. That the proposed rooftop addition will not be visibly direct, will not be visible directly under the front facade and will only be visible from limited oblique views over the north side facade, where the addition will be seen in conjunction with a taller masonry tower of a neighboring building. That the rooftop additions' bronze, bronze finished metal cladding and rectilinear windows combined with its simple, modern detailing will harmonize with the building's front facade and streetscape while also reflecting its modern identity. That replacement of the painted brick work throughout the north lotline facade with new uncoated brick work will retain, will return the facade closer to its historic appearance. And that the proposed excavation of the cellar will be done in compliance with the Department of Buildings Regulations under the supervision of a licensed professional engineer to protect the facades, buildings, facades, and adjacent buildings. and adjacent buildings.
Thank you. And Commissioner Quembe, would you second that motion?
Second.
Right, and Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Master?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Quembe?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson? Commissioner Mann?
Aye.
Mr. Wilder?
Aye.
With ten in favor and none opposed, the motion passed.
All right, that's approved. Thank you. And we'll now move to our next and final public meeting item.
Yes, the last public meeting item is item number six. Docket number LPC 25-07704, An Application for a Certificate of Appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 1413, Lot 24, 157 East 78th Street, 157 East 78th Street Individual Landmark. This is a vernacular rowhouse with Italianate-style influences built in 1861 and later altered. The application is to replace windows, alter the front facade and construct a rear yard addition. This was last presented at the public hearing of May 20th, '25, and no action was taken at that time. And the staff will provide a brief introduction. And the applicants are here to present revisions to the proposal once we open the proceedings.
Okay, Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to open the proceedings? Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
Go second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Janelle Gunther, Preservation Staff. The item before you is for the 157 East 78th Street House Individual Landmark. The subject property is located mid-block on the north side of East 78th Street, between Lexington Avenue and Third Avenue. This was last presented to you as a public hearing item on May 20th of this year. The proposal is to replace windows at the parlor floor of the front facade, alter the entrance at the front facade and construct a rear yard addition. No action was taken at that time. At the public hearing, the commissioners present expressed a consensus for support for the window replacement. And most commissioners supported the proposed alterations at the entrance. However, the commissioners present did not support the presence of a security gate at the front entrance. Regarding the proposed rear yard addition, the commissioners present were mixed in their opinion on the proposal. Some of the commissioners supported the design of the full-height addition as presented. Others expressed support for a full-height addition, but felt that the design of the fenestration should be more traditional at the upper floors. Others felt that the addition should be lowered by one floor. The applicant has returned with a revised proposal and is here to discuss the changes and to answer any questions.
Thank you, Janelle. My name is Christopher Lee. I am partner over at Model Practice. Happy to be back here to present the revisions to our design for our project at 157 East 78th Street. Project presentation here is broken up into three basic sections. One to give you a little bit, brief history, especially for those of you who are new to the project. And then representation of the proposed design for the front facade and then the rear facade. So to, to give those of you who, who have not seen this before some context, this is on East 78th Street. This is the composite view of the block facing north along that street. You can see the project site identified over here, where there's a row of five individual, well, four individual landmarks that, that constitute five of the former individual townhouses in, in the row. To the, to the west, to the left, is a 16-story sort of high-rise luxury building. And to the east, it's also bookended by a 10-story building. So these are the, the sort of the last of a very small residential-scale building on, on the block. Here we have the block plan to show the accretion of horizontal and vertical additions that have occurred over time, notably pushing back into the rear, rear yard. This area is, is our project. And there's currently a two-story addition that is pushing into the rear yard. We are proposing a four-story horizontal enlargement. This is a, a series of massing diagrams that describe the building as, as it's changed over time. Again, originally, this is a row of 11 homes, self-similar in, in architecture, where the front facade was contiguous, as was the rear facade. And with the, the progress of time, there were vertical enlargements and horizontal enlargements that have occurred. So the current condition is, is sort of noted here, where 157 is set back from its neighbors at 159 and 161. Over here at this next diagram is, is the proposed, or the condition that would be, that, that would result if, if the approved application for 163 and 165 is built out. You can see a more contiguous expression of the rear, rear yard facades. If 157 is approved, we would have a sort of restoration of the contiguous rear, rear yard, rear yard elevation. So here, side-by-side comparison of the original condition in NCT 61, showing you the rear facades all aligned and the proposed condition diagrammed on the right, where we are proposing to enlarge the rear facade along four, four floors. Images of the existing context, starting from left and moving to the right, 163 and 165 are two individual townhomes that have since been combined. And there is an approved application with LPC that, that pulls, pulls this rear facade back in line with the facade at 161 and 159. Looking further to the right, you can see the way that our project site at 157 is, is pushed back roughly 10, 10 and a half feet from, from the neighboring property at 159. And a view of the approved application over at 163 and 165. You can see the way that, that the uppermost floors are more or less in line with, with the neighbors, creating a more contiguous expression of, of the street facade. Sorry, rear yard facade. And so in thinking about the overall height of the building and some of the feedback that we got from the last hearing, we wanted to see if there are ways to, to kind of bring back some of the domesticity and residential scale of the project, refer back to sort of the mansard roof as a device that architects use to help to mitigate the expression of height. Here at the Gilsey Hotel, built in 1871, the, the critics were, were describing the way that the mansard roof helped to make the building feel less, less vertical, less tall. And so in thinking about our project, here is a diagrammatic section through, through the building with the street, 78th Street on the right and the rear yard to the left. You can see the cornice and the mansard roof over the front facade. And then over time, there was the addition of the rear yard horizontal enlargements. And what we are looking to do is sort of mirror, mirror the condition of the front and introduce a sort of the mansard language at the rear facade to mitigate the expression of the building's height and, and to restore the, the sense of sort of domestic, domesticity. Here, building sections with the existing on the left and the proposed condition that we're presenting to you today on the right. The mansard roof, you can see over here, mirroring the angle that is used for the mansard roof at, at the front of the building. So first, first section zooms in to the front facade, where we had more, more, more or less support from, from the commission, with some minor comments about the appropriateness of the, the security gate. Starting from the left, you have the existing condition, where the main entrance is on the, the, the ground floor, the, the garden level. And then the proposed condition, where we introduced an inflement to, to reestablish hierarchy of the entrance and to hearken back to the day when, when the stoop and, and entrance was back on the parlor floor. But we had a, a security gate here, which, which had some resistance and was, was not deemed appropriate in our last hearing. And so, so we've returned here. The inflement is intact, but the gate has been removed. And here, rendered views of what was proposed in the last round at the hearing in, in May and the proposed condition without the metal security gate. Spent a significant amount of, of time or more time at the rear facade. And so we're, we're back here to, to present the, the new option or the new, new proposed condition. And we were looking back at the mansard roof as a, as a way to mitigate height. Here, we have a mansard roof in the Park South Historic District at the left, where the mansard roof is facing the rear yard. And similarly, closer to our project site, we have a two-story mansard roof, which helps to bring the expression of vertical, of the vertical nature of the building down to, to a more sort of human scale. And a side-by-side comparison of the existing facade at the left with the proposed condition that we had presented in May, where we had a four-by-three grid with, with increased articulation of corbeling of the windows as you went from the garden level to, to the top floor. And here, we have the proposed condition, where rather than a four-by-three grid, we have a three-by-three nine-square grid to establish the base and middle of the building. And the top of the building is then articulated with a mansard roof with three projecting bays that, that push, push through the mansard condition. And then the side-by-side of what was proposed in, in May and what we are here presenting to you today. And last, last time, this is more of a refresher. We're still using the same architectural devices to, to introduce sort of articulation and detail and shadow to, to the facade, where, where at the base of the building, there is no, no sort of window corbeling. But as you ascend up the building, that, the, the window sizes decrease in both width and height. And the surrounds of the windows increase the amount of corbeling that occurs. And that happens in, in, in both plan and, as well as section. It's a visualization that you've seen before when Janelle introduced the project, the project as presented in May on the left and the new proposed condition, which we feel brings down the, the sense of, of, of height and monumentality and restores it a more domestic kind of scale. Material palette here is very restrained, using the same color of brick that's being used at the front of the building to match the existing condition with any miscellaneous metals or, or cladding, especially the window surrounds at the mansard roof, being in this sort of brick-red metal, metal material. Here, a zoomed-in view to kind of show the, the articulation and difference between the lower nine-square grid and the projecting windows at the mansard roof condition, both articulated with brick, but, but changing in orientation from, from the middle of the building to, to, to the top of the building. Really, really thinking about the Italianate style of the original building and, and breaking up the facade into the tri-part division, the traditional tri-part division of base, middle and top. The, the separation of the top and middle is, is emphasized with the thickened band of, of brick course between the mansard roof and the middle portion of the building. So you can see this in diagram form a little bit better. And here, illustrated in, in the black is, is the way that the window sizes are changing as you move from the bottom of the building to the top of the building. Ultimately, creating a more open connection at the more public floors at the base of the building, where we have kitchen and dining, and a more intimate sort of condition at the top of the building, where the windows are smaller and where they are connected to, to bedrooms. And then finally, a composite view showing you the existing condition at the left and proposed at the right, where, where restoring or enlarging these horizontal, horizontally enlarging the, the, the floors help to provide a continuity of, of the rear facade, sort of restoring the donut to its former condition.
All right, thank you.
Happy to take any questions.
Yes, Commissioner Ginsburg?
So I have two questions. One is, just looking back at my notes, the lintels in the front are white now and you're proposing to make them red. And I think I at least commented that they should stay white. Was there, but it looks like, from what you're showing, that you did not make that change.
We, we didn't make the, we didn't make the change. We're proposing restoring the lintels at the front to the brownstone that, that was original to the, the building at the time of construction.
Okay. And then the second note was I, I, and I think others had said that the top floor of the rear should remain in the plane it's in now. Is there a reason, besides you want the space, that you didn't do that?
Well, part, part of the reason, sure, is, is that the, the clients do, do want to build, build out that floor area for the program that they intend. But more importantly, I think we, we're looking back at the historic condition and trying to restore the, the rear facade as, as being in plane and, and looking, looking at our neighbors and, and the way that they have done it and bringing out our facade to, to.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Chu?
History, because I don't recall this one.
You were not here for the hearing.
Yeah. That's, that's good. Because I don't remember. The rears, with this proposal, all the rears would have been additions to the original houses. Okay. And none of the neighboring houses have original facades rear at any floor, even at the top?
That's correct. And then the commission approved a full-height rear yard addition at the pair of buildings at the end of, other end of the row.
At the end of the row.
Of the group of the four.
So what, in terms of comment on the rear, the, the revision the applicant has done is done a mansard-style top floor. Is that because there were comments about?
Yeah. So at that, at the hearing, Yeah, so at that, at the hearing, there were of the commissioners present, the majority of the commissioners did support the volume and the full-height addition, although many of those also thought that the design could be restudied a bit to give it a more of a domestic scale. And then there were some commissioners who felt that the addition should be lowered by one floor. But there was a lot of discussion about how these buildings, while individual landmarks, they really are a an ensemble, and they historically all had additions. And then the and then the commission approved full-height addition on the two of the others in the group. And that that sort of evolution, particularly on the Upper East Side, is is typical of row houses on the Upper East Side and also was evident in this particular group of individual landmarks. And so, given that typology and history, the, you know, some of the, the majority of the commissioners supported the volume, but there were commissioners who thought that it should be lowered by one floor. So I think that the applicant is trying to kind of address that, as well as the comments about the design with the mansard roof and a and a different scale there.
And is the new proposed windows the scale of the original historic windows at the top? Because they're much smaller than your original.
They are much smaller, they're two inches bigger than
They're two, okay.
Than than the existing.
Okay, and just a question about the brickwork. You've got running bond on the lower portion, and there are terracotta tiles that are like stack bond on top.
We're actually proposing a vertical stack bond at the top, where the mansard roof expression is.
Okay. And those are what painted aluminum enclosures around the windows?
For the window surrounds at the top floor, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Any other questions? Okay. All right, then I think we'll move to our discussion. We didn't receive any updated comments from the public on this one. So we're looking, as I said, at this individual landmark that was designated together with the other individual landmarks in the row. And the last time we saw this, there it included window replacement on the front, the creation of a door and frame and a gate at the entry, and then this addition, a full-height rear yard addition. And as the applicant said, and as Janelle said, the commission was mostly supportive of the work on the front facade, but did ask that the applicant eliminate the gate at the entry, which they've done. And with respect to the rear facade, I think I I just sort of explained the discussion that we had last time. And the applicant has, you know, come back with revisions to address those who supported the full-height addition but wanted to see a more domestic character and and try to also address the concerns of those who thought it should be reduced by a floor by introducing the mansard. Yeah, Commissioner Chu.
Also, what was commented on last time, the windows on the proposed, and I guess in the previous two, the new proposed, are those just single full lights, vertical, on the lower floors?
The top two levels are in-swing French casements. And the second floor or the first floor, where where you have the parlor floor, those those would be fixed fixed windows with a center vertical mullion, and the bottom garden-level windows would be French casement outswing.
Okay, the top, I'm sorry, the the very top looks like it could be one over one, but I can't quite. Did you say those are?
Probably you're seeing a shadow
Oh.
of of the soffit beyond.
Okay, so it is a full vertical light?
Full vertical, so trying to keep it all the same same type of window operation.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we'll begin our discussion. Vice Chair Master, you were one of the among the commissioners who supported it, as was presented last time, finding that the rear was a contemporary sort of evocation of the historic character and and that the full height related to and brought the facade into line with the other buildings in the row. So now that they've made changes, would you start this? Yeah.
Sure. In the front facade, I do have to say that removing the security on the window or the door is an improvement. On the rear, I understand what they're trying to achieve on the top floor with the mansard roof reference. And it's certainly a less heavy approach than was initially presented. But now I'm starting to realize that it's very vertical, which isn't typical of a of residential. So I I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait and hear what some of the architects have to say.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Quembe. For the discussion so far.
I guess overall, just paying attention to the the prior comments and see how they were addressed. For the front facade, it 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 looks like it was pretty much, I guess, was just the security gate, more or less.
Yep.
And I'm I'm fine with that move. I I think maybe the major point of discussion is the the rear yard and the rear yard addition. It's it's an interesting approach, and it looks like it was a type of compromise to the comments that came. I'm actually excited about the the use of brick and also the relief in playing with all the the different stories and the windows themselves. So I I think it was a a deeper look into potentially what could happen. And in in general, I find it appropriate.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Chu.
In terms of the front facade, I think what was done, I guess, eliminating the security door gate, looks fine. It's more presentable as a front facade. For the rear, looking at what's being proposed as opposed to what was previously proposed, I think that I I would have agreed with the fellow, my fellow commissioners on the scale of maybe the top floor. I would, I would actually have been okay with the proposal in terms of the massing approach on the original. I think that the mansard option is interesting. It is unusual in terms of mass, it does diminish. Again, I wouldn't have had an issue with the previous proposal. I think that either one would be appropriate. I do find the 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 current proposed curious. I just, I'm trying to understand how that would feel there. But I do think that the applicant has reduced a sense of scale by making the top windows more in keeping with historic scale. I would have actually been interested to see the previous version with the smaller windows at the top, but I don't want to design this for the applicant. I'm okay with with the proposal.
Right, thank you. Commissioner Wilder.
Yeah, I was kind of thinking the exact same thing. I I I, I don't know, I, it was almost like, I won't say went too far back to the drawing board. But I see the connection and the reasons why it was done. So now it's like playing with the conflicting approaches of keeping the same plane of the rear and kind of the same language or tying in with the history of the mansard on the on the front. So I appreciate explaining the the design process. And I I always find mansard roofs interesting. I I just don't know if it was necessary here. I think I think literally making the windows smaller would have probably been able to address some of the comments from before. I I think it's okay, but I think, like, Commissioner Chu, I I think it's an interesting approach, though.
All right, Commissioner Man.
I had precisely the same reaction as Commissioner Chu. Something about the new folks here, or folks who didn't see it the first time. But I can appreciate the responsiveness to the comments, and I can appreciate that. It's a contemporary interpretation of the historic condition. I wanted to comment, I actually found the most compelling pages at the very beginning, the sort of Minecraft-like diagrams, and then the and then the conclusion of that, that the addition of this actually restores the spirit of the alignment of the back, you know, whether it's the May twenty-one version or or today's proposal. I I found that very compelling, and I can support this.
Commissioner Chen.
Yeah, I'm in agreement of of some of the comments, especially of Commissioner Chu. I think I think the somehow the mansard reinterpretation, you know, I would have supported the original version, so. And the removal of the front security gate at the front facade is fine, but in the back, I think I I'm leaning toward the original version.
Okay, Commissioner Ginsburg.
Sometimes, seeing what you asked for, that maybe you shouldn't have asked for it. So I I tend to agree with Commissioner Chu. The original version with potentially making those upper-floor windows smaller, raising the height and getting rid of the railing or shrinking the railing would be better. I think removing the gate in the front is a big improvement.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum.
I still think that the top floor should not be there, so it's not for me.
Commissioner Jefferson, I think you were in that same, you were in that same camp.
I don't, I could take it or leave it, but I prefer to leave it.
The idea of aligning the the buildings makes it. Then this is the last one, and it's slightly different makes it. Weight and different, and and concept that he's using is fine, so I can I can accept this, and I can accept.
Okay. Okay. All right, so I think what, it sounds like we do have some enough support for this today, but that there's been a lot of comments that appreciated some of the previous design and the the sort of the mansard is maybe, as you said, in conflict with kind of the design, but trying to relate to the building. So maybe we do a motion to approve it, but encourage them to continue to work with the staff to develop that, the proportions and design of those upper floors. That's the thing to do.
In the matter of LPC dash twenty-five dash zero seven seven oh four, 157 East Seventy-Eighth Street, Seventy-Eighth. Application is to replace and construct a rear. I recommend approval. Finding that the proposed work will not eliminate Oh, thanks. will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features, that the proposed windows at the parlor floor, including two multi-light paired in-swing casement windows at the original window openings and a multi-light fixed window at the westernmost masonry opening, will match the historic windows in terms of details, material, and configuration. And the slight change in operation emitting the separately operated transom will still maintain the historic fenestration pattern. That the building is part of a row of individual landmarks, where all the stoops have been removed and the ground-floor entrances have been installed, some with prominent surrounds. Therefore, the presence of a more prominent entrance surround at the ground floor will be in keeping with this pattern of change over time, and the removal of a portion of the floor plate, creating a double-height space behind the entrance, will not be perceptible from public thoroughfares. That the materials of the proposed ground-floor entrance infringement, including red brick, brownstone, brownstone, tinted cast stone, and bluestone with a panelled wood door, will be compatible with the materials of the building. That the proposed curved articulation and projection from the plane of the facade of the ground-floor entrance infringement will be consistent with the proportions of other modern inframments found at houses of this age, type, and style that historically had their stoops removed and new basement entrances entrances created and will will relate to the scale and proportions of the row house. That the existing rear facade is a floor taller than the original rear facade due to the construction of the mansard roof addition prior to designation. Therefore, the proposed rear yard addition will not further obscure the building's original massing. That that the brick-clad rear addition will be in keeping with the massing and materiality of typical rear additions found at row houses of this type and age. That the proposed rear yard addition will be in keeping with the height and depth of rear yard extensions in the block and will not overwhelm the building or diminish the central greenscape within the rear yards of the row. That the top floor of the rear yard addition, featuring an angled facade and dormers, will recall recall the mansard roof addition at the front facade in the contemporary way and be in keeping with the differentiated top floors of the rear yard additions at this block. And that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of this individual landmark. And I I recommend that the applicant work with staff to work on the proportion and design of the upper-floor rear yard windows.
And Commissioner Quembe, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Vice Chair Master.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum. Commissioner Quembe.
Aye.
Mr. Jefferson.
Aye.
Your man.
Aye.
Mr. Wilder.
Aye.
With nine in favor and one opposed, the motion passes.
All right, so that's approved, thank you. That concludes our morning session. We are going to break for lunch now. We're about twenty-five minutes behind schedule, so we'll come back promptly at one thirty, and we'll resume with our public hearing agenda. And we'll ask all members of the public to exit the hearing room at this time, and all members of the public who are on the Zoom and who wish to return after lunch to voluntarily exit from the Zoom meeting at this time, so you don't experience technical difficulties that may arise if we have to remove you. And we'll see everybody at one thirty.